All right. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to Lake, welcome Lake County citizens to the February 25th Board of Supervisors Meeting. As always, we start off with a moment of silence, and I think we have a couple.
Yeah, last week, I lost a friend and my neighbor Jennifer Chisholm. It is to me. She grew up in Upper Lake, graduated from Upper Lake High School the same year as us, and has been my neighbor for 20 years. She was also a valley fire survivor and one of the first people to rebuild on my street. And it's just a very sad and devastating loss for our community.
I have one as well. I'd like to give a moment of silence to Michael Ikey. He's an elder from Havemetal Tribe. He passed last week. He worked, he was one of, he graduated from Upper Lake in 1959 as well. He grew up on Upper Lake Rancheria. And he was probably one of the first mentors that I would have had as a young man. He was a general manager for the casino at Robinson. He was administrator for the tribal health. He was on the council for Upper Lake as well, and served many roles when it came to leadership. So his nickname was Mufasa at the casino. My mom would work for him. And so for me, just having that, that sense of leadership back then, it was similar amongst all different cultures and whatnot. They were just really hard knocks and no excuses and get it done. So he's also the father to Chairwoman Danielle Ikey Sorelli. So we offer the family condolences and, and give that moment of silence. Chief Banks, can you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Oh, thank you for that. Okay, next on the agenda, we have four, item four, which is consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. It looks like we have two. I'll still read them as there is something we need to do about it. But extra item 4.1, consideration of extra item and consideration of alternate public health officer appointment and professional services contract with Anju Goel, MD, for a term of six months for an amount not to exceed $31,000 for the term of the agreement and authorize the health services director to sign. Should I just do one at a time or should I do both? One at a time. So, public input? Okay, I'll open it up to the public.
Okay. Good morning. First of all, I want to say thank you to Susan, Joanna, Caroline for their help yesterday in getting this extra item added. And now I also want to apologize to you for getting this extra item added. We are going to request the table of this item. There was a couple of questions that came up late in the evening yesterday regarding insurance and the difference between board, board certified and board eligible in the state of California. So due to those things, we are going to request an extension.
So we'll still add it or, okay. So if there's any other comments from the public, hearing none, bring it back to the board for action.
At this point, we're not looking to take action, so no action? Are we approving the extra item to still talk about it? Because it sounds like it's being pulled.
From what I understand, I think we are acting to add it and then we'll postpone it, right? That's what I, that's what I thought we talked about, so I don't know.
So at this point, if staff is in agreement to pull this item to a later date, it's effectively a withdrawal. Your board can still take public comment as to that issue. The immediate issue being whether or not this should be taken up as an extra item. And after public comment, as Supervisor Sabatier said, if your board is in agreement, your board may just acknowledge the, the withdrawal of this item for the time being.
So we can do that. We'll acknowledge the pulling of it and we won't take action on it then. All right, so the next item is 4.2, extra item, consideration of agenda item and consideration of closed session item, public employee evaluation, public health officer. And with that, you, go ahead, C A O.
This item is being submitted as an extra agenda item. Justification for this request to consider an item not on the posted agenda is as follows. This item came to my attention subsequent to the posting of the current agenda, and there is a need to take action before the next agenda.
All right, so I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this? And I'm not seeing anyone, anyone on Zoom? All right, back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, due to the fact that this came up after the posting of the agenda and potential action is needed prior to the next available agenda, I'd like to approve this extra item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and it looks like we have, we'll take care of that during closed session. And let's see, okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. As you know, consent agenda is non-controversial, commonly non-controversial items, and, and we pass in one motion. Some of them can be pulled for further discussion by the board or anyone from the public. And so when we, and if we pull an item, we will go ahead and fit it in wherever we can or later on in the day. So with that, it looks like we have one. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 5.12, just for brief clarification.
All right. Are there any others? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to pull an agenda item on the consent agenda? All right, not seeing any or hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as posted with the exception of 512.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, we will take up 5.12 at a later time. And so, let's see, we got, okay, so next is public input. As you know, public input is a chance for the public to come up and give us their input or their statement about something that is not on the posted agenda. Just know that we cannot respond according to the Brown Act, and we will either A, defer you or guide you to your supervisor, or we will ensure that you meet with appropriate department or elected official that is the head of that department. So if there's anyone that has any public input, please come up, state your name, and you will have three minutes to talk about your item.
Good morning. Me, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Just wanted to give everyone a reminder that our offices or our counters will be closed on Friday, February 28th, the purpose of which is to switch over for our current electronic permitting system to what we consider to be a much better system of OpenGov, and we will reopen our counter on Monday, March 3rd. For those who are used to scheduling inspections online, we ask that during Friday that they please just call our department, and we will go ahead and still be happy to schedule those inspections. Thank you.
All right. I know we're not supposed to respond, but I am happy about that. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to give their public input? Anybody online? Oh, you do, ma'am?
For non-agenda items?
Yes, yes. All right, so.
Samsung?
So if you're on a Samsung and you're on Zoom, please unmute. If you're having a tough time unmuting, press star six, and then state your name for the record, and we'll start your timer so you can give us public input. It looks like you're, okay.
Hello?
There we go. All right, state your name for the record, we'll start a timer.
Hello, my name is Skylar Leywall. I am with Pillsbury Family Farms, and I would like to give my public input because it has come to our attention that the Community Development Director has recently advised a licensed cannabis permittee by Farm, Pillsbury Family Farms, to seek out a police officer, our local, return a background disqualification as a condition in order to retain our permit to avoid revocation. This directive from the Community Development Department raises serious concerns, particularly regarding its potential conflict with state laws and regulations. We urge the Board of Supervisors to take immediate action in crafting an ordinance that formally aligns with Community Development Department's approach. Specifically, if a cannabis permittee or their employee fail a background check with the local Lake County Sheriff's Office, the ordinance should clearly state that the permittee or the employee must engage in soliciting a peace officer to challenge and potentially reverse a disqualification in order to maintain their licensed permit status. This is a critical issue that demands the attention of our board and our county. If one permittee is being directed to follow this process, it should be imperative that it is a requirement that should be standardized across all future cannabis permittees through the county zoning ordinance. Addressing this inconsistency will ensure the fairness and the transparency and the regulatory clarity for all the operators within the industry. We respectfully request that the board prioritize this matter to safeguard the integrity and the stability of the local Lake County cannabis ordinance. Thank you. Muleha.
All right, thank you. Is there any one else with public input on Zoom? All right. There's no one else in the chambers? I will close public input at this time and move on to the next agenda item, which is pet of the week. Director Turner, did you want to comment or, because you were sitting?
I'm just available for questions.
Okay, thanks. All right, pet of the week.
Good morning. I'm Officer Pleywood, Lake County Animal Care and Control. This right here is Bailey. She's a six-month-old female pit lab mix. She has been with us since the end of January. She is extremely friendly with people and other animals. She will be spayed, microchipped, and fully vaccinated upon adoption. If you're interested in meeting her or any other adoptable pet, we have our care facility down at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. We can also be reached at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Well, I didn't hear Bailey whine or anything, so.
Very low key.
All right. So we will now move on to our 910, which we are, we have, we are a little over, but we'll go ahead and move on to it. So 6.3, consideration of update on 2024 activities of the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority and presentation on the invasive Mediterranean oak bore from LCCRA Partner, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. First, I will go ahead and give this to the Chair of this JPA, Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, we're really excited to have this update from Lake County Risk Reduction Authority and presentation by Clerk, so I want to invite everybody up here. Who's a part of this? Is John going to be on Zoom?
Yes, John is on Zoom.
Okay. Good morning.
Vanda Vort.
So we'll start with the RRA update, and should, do you see John? Okay.
We're good? We're waiting for John? While we're waiting for John, I'll just make a quick statement. I humbly request that we list our questions and ask at the end of this presentation, and we'll go forward after this presentation with the oak, Mediterranean oak bore. When we have that presentation, we'll answer those questions. So let's try to get through the presentation, then ask questions, we'll give it to the public and go from there. That way we can get through this, because as you know, we have a robust agenda, so I was giving her a chance too, so I just made the opportunity for her to find.
John, are you available?
Hello, folks. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. I am, and I'm unable to turn on my video. Zoom, Zoom is not permitting me. I'm not sure if that's required or if there's an update to the settings that can be made by the host. I'm also happy to move forward if my video cannot be turned on.
We have a slideshow?
Yes, John has it. John, can you share? Do you have that ability?
It is not permitting me, Terry. Are you able to, to share the slides? Apologies.
I'm not at the moment.
Try it again.
Try it again, John.
While we're waiting for them, Will, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. So Will Evans.
It is.
Yes, you just have to speak into it.
Yeah, Will Evans, I'm the co-founder and executive director of Clerk, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based right here in Lake County, working to address the problems that come about at the intersection of the environment and the economy. And I know we're short on time, so I will pass it off to my colleague, Julia.
Hello, I'm Julia. I'm the newest biologist at Clear Lake Environmental Research Center.
All right, thank you. Terry, we got it up, so did you have anything else or?
No, we can go ahead. John Vander Vort is an employee of the Lake County Resource Conservation District and serves as the facilitator of the RRA, thanks to funding under the Adaptation Planning Grant Program. So, John?
Thank you so much, Terry, and I was able to get my camera on. So it is so great to see everyone. Apologies, just one moment while, okay. There we are. Well, thank you all so much for having me today. My name is John Vander Vort, Conservation Program Manager with the Lake County Resource Conservation District. I currently serve as the facilitator and coordinator for the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, often referred to as the LCCRA or simply the RRA. And I'm excited to join you all today to provide an overview of some of the RRA's programming from the last year, as well as highlight some of the priorities that we are looking towards in 2025. So thank you all once again for the opportunity to be here today. So for those less familiar with the RRA, I would like to take just a moment to share a little bit about how it was formed and the primary purpose that it serves to the greater Lake County community. The RRA was originally created in 2018 through a joint powers agreement between the County of Lake and numerous local fire protection districts. And the RRA was really formed in direct response to the series of devastating wildfires that we are all familiar with, and really spurred the, the realization that more effective coordination was required between local government entities to ensure that those government entities are more effectively and able to respond and remain resilient to natural disasters such as wildfires. As such, the RRA seeks to accomplish the goals that you see listed on the slide in front of you. Primarily, the RRA acts as a coordinating body and mechanism for local government agencies working on preparedness and resiliency efforts, and allows them to more effectively share resources, collaborate, and ensure effective use of local government authority. Second, the RRA works to provide low or no cost programs to the public to support the development of programs that bolster community resilience at the local scale. And this is included support for local firewise communities, community-based organizations, all advancing local resilience efforts. And finally, the RRA seeks to provide and effectively elevate existing resources to the public to ensure effective assessment and management of the risks posed from natural disasters. And this is included both federal and statewide resources developed by agencies such as the U.S. Forest Service, as well as CAL FIRE, and resources developed by local agencies to, to Lake County. So in terms of how the RRA is governed, it is actively governed by a Board of Directors, which includes representatives from local city and county governments, as well as fire protection districts, water districts, and native sovereign nations. And the board is currently led by Supervisor Pyska, who was elected to the position of Chair just over a month ago, following the leadership of past Chair Moak Simon. Now, I'd like to take just a moment to thank both Chair Pyska and Past Chair Simon for the leadership and guidance that they continue to provide to the RRA, so thank you both. And as for ongoing administrative support, that is currently provided by staff of the Lake County Resource Conservation District, that would be myself. And, and a significant portion of my time is currently provided through a grant agreement between the County of Lake and the RCB, which I will discuss in greater detail a little later on in the presentation and what's alluded to by Terry prior to my, prior to my start. So that's a little bit about what we do. How have we been doing it over the past year? Well, in 2024, the RRA hosted its 12 regular monthly meetings in various meeting locations across Lake County in an effort to ensure ease of accessibility to individuals based around the county. And these meetings really primarily serve as an opportunity for community members, practitioners, and representatives of local government agencies to provide updates to one another, share resources and best practices, as well as coordinate around upcoming relevant funding opportunities. In early 2024, the RRA also hosted one special meeting, which was focused on providing DEI learnings to RRA directors. This was required under the grant that currently primarily supports the RRA. And the RRA also launched a number of original resources, including a YouTube channel and an RRA website, which are actively being built out, but will soon host all RRA-developed resources and materials, and serve as a clearinghouse for all materials discussed within the context of the RRA. Additionally, in 2024, the RRA launched two subcommittees, the biomass subcommittee, which is supported by a biomass utilization pilot project, which is funded through the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, as well as a grants best fit subcommittee, which is focused on supporting effective coordination around upcoming funding opportunities and reducing competition amongst Lake County partner agencies wherever possible, and ensuring that we are really drawing down as much funding from private, state, federal, and philanthropic sources into Lake County as possible. The RRA also conducted some programming that you do not see included on this list. For instance, the RRA also hosted two virtual town hall meetings, the first of which featured a presentation from Dr. Francisca Santana, Assistant Professor at the University of Washington, where she presented on her findings regarding how Northern California where she presented on her findings regarding how Northern California communities are actively adapting to wildfire events. And the second town hall featured a presentation on Mediterranean oak borer from Michael Jones, who currently serves as Forestry Advisor for Sonoma, Mendocino, and Lake Counties, Mediterranean oak borer, or MAB, which you will all hear about from our partners over at Clerk immediately after my time, certainly being a priority of Lake County practitioners in recent years. So to discuss the kind of fiscal progress that the RRA has made, I'll actually back up just a little bit further to 2023, where the RRA was able to acquire funding for dedicated administrative support through a collaborative grant proposal that was developed by the County of Lake and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. This project, titled Planning for an Equitable Climate-Safe Lake, also provides support for the development of Lake County's county-wide climate action plan, as well as the implementation of a number of action items from the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. This effort is funded through the Adaptation Planning Grant Program, or APGP, from the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, previously known as the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, as most folks likely, likely know it. And this opportunity provides $89,500 in funding for administrative support for the RRA from the beginning of the grant term in early 2023 through the end of 2025, so through the end of this year. So looking forward, there is some programming that I look forward to highlighting for all of you. Between now and November of 2025, we will be hosting two additional workshops focused on providing DEI learnings to RRA leadership and members, again, as is required under the grant that currently supports the RRA. The RRA also recently launched a new subcommittee, which is focused on water use for fire suppression. The subcommittee is facilitated by the county's Ontario Logs Den, and this will cover topics such as fire flow testing for hydrants, new construction requiring interior sprinklers for fire suppression, drought and water storage, as well as addressing county-wide water system capacity. In the coming weeks, the RRA is also going to relaunch its Grants Best Fit Subcommittee with some updated resources and materials to ensure that this group is able to continue to effectively meet the immediate needs of those participating in this group. And then as for the kind of broader strategic direction of the RRA in 2025, over the next year, it's certainly going to be a focus to identify ongoing sustained funding for administrative support, recognizing that the current grant does only go through the end of 2025. And it's also going to be a priority to ensure that RRA membership is really representative of the communities of Lake County, which is why we are currently conducting an analysis to identify organizations that are active within Lake County, but not actively participating in the RRA. And this is going to inform additional outreach efforts taking place later on in the year. And that was my admittedly pretty brief and high-level overview of the RRA's programming over the last year. But I am happy to take any questions, and I, of course, encourage anyone to reach out to me regarding questions for the RRA if they're looking for any additional information on the RRA at the email that you see on the, on the slide in front of you. So thank you all once again for the opportunity to speak today. It's greatly appreciated, and I look forward to continuing to, working with many of you and continuing to write updates on the activity of the RRA.
Thank you for that, John. Did you want to add anything, Terry or Will or?
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just add that getting the funding in 2023 has been a massive game changer so that we could have finally staffed to support the RRA. It's, you know, it's, it, over the years prior to that, everyone would come together with the ideas of things that we wanted to do, but it was really hard to activate any of those ideas without staff. So having staff in place last year and going into this year is just critically important. We are continuing to look for ongoing funding to continue the support. It's just going to be one of those things that we have to continue to hustle. So thanks to the RCD for all of their help over this year, and I'm looking at all of you. Thank you so much. It's been a really incredible year, and we'll hear a little bit later more from the RCD on a lot of the other programming that we've been developing. So it's a very exciting morning.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I appreciate the update, and definitely big strides have been made. I know I've been pushy about the Risk Reduction Authority in the sense that a JPA functions in a certain way. You guys are in your infancy stage. I want to maybe use that word inappropriately because you've been around for quite some time now, but yet you're, you're growing. And obviously, you needed to be able to grow financially and in capacity to be able to handle these things. Just kind of curious as to the future, as you obtain more grant funding or any other source that you get funding from, will those funds be going to the RRA or are those funds going to continue to go to the RCD? Just because I think the best way would be for any joint powers to have that money go into their accounts versus RCD. Right now, it's been very much feeding RCD in order to get them into better capacity. But in the long run, based on my understanding of joint powers authority, typically, the money would go into a RRA fund and not the contractor that has been hired to run the RRA. Just kind of curious what the next steps might be.
I'm happy to respond to that. I think that we are actively kind of charting that path forward. And part of the biomass utilization pilot project that I mentioned earlier, in an effort through that pilot project, those contractors are working to identify potential funding mechanisms for the RRA to ensure sustainability long-term. And we're exploring really a suite of options at the moment to ensure that the RRA does continue to be sustainable year over year. And this, you know, some of the options we're considering are additional grant funding, as well as fee-for-services that we can provide to practitioners within the county. We're really exploring a number of options to ensure that the RRA itself is able to continue to, to remain steady in, in its funding.
Okay, I'm, I'm not certain that, that, I appreciate the answer. I'm not sure that that answered it, but I'll just keep being patient and, and paying attention. And I guess I'll, I'll just be blunt in, in my clarification. I'll just use the Area Planning Council as an example. We do not, we, we have a contract with the contractor that runs the APC. And the money is at the APC, and then we spend that money by paying the contractor. Right now, so far, the funding has gone directly to other agencies. And the RR, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the RRA has not necessarily been the, the owner or the recipient of the grants that have been accessed thus far. I think that's perfectly fine as there's a growth stage. In order to get to a full-blown joint powers authority, I'm just hoping that at one point, it will go to the, there is, the risk authority has its own account, it receives all the grants that it goes after, and then it provides those grants through contracts or other ways to those people or else I, I, in my opinion, if we continue this way, at one point, we have to deal with the conflict of interest that the rest, the RCD can't have two boards.
Are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, so are you on the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay?
I just started.
Yeah, it's, so a couple of years back when I joined initially, they went through the County of Napa. And then once it progressed, then we pulled it back into the, or the JPA. I think it's, it's just one of those growing phases because at one time, they had a hard time getting everything to the full JPA because they were the admin group, and then we started working on different transitions. And so I think that, that could be, that should be the path here, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so let me just clear this up. The ABG funding is for staffing the RRA. The RRA still gets contributions from all the members, and that's specifically for programming. And we do have plans for more programming. We, we have had two virtual town halls this year. We've got a lot going on. What John was talking about with the biomass plan, that is, it's a little, a little too, a little much to unpack here right now. But that is to build in sustainable funding or other projects in the future. We are in the planning phase of that under the OPR-LCI grant. So there's a lot going on. The RRA has a lot of priorities, but we can't accomplish anything without staffing. And so what we're looking for, for funding for the RCD is to continue to have that capacity to run the meetings, to run the subcommittees, to keep the website updated, to, and the YouTube channel, which you can find all of our resources. So there's a lot going on that's being put out to the public here. I don't understand really what you're getting at.
I think it's going to get to what you're talking about eventually. I think right now, it's just, it, you're, and I bring up the, Juan B. Workforce Alliance of the North Bay because that's what I remember. It's a similarity to how it should be eventually. And so I kind of see that eventually happening with JPAs.
And just as, as a clarification, part of the process with the consultants with LCI for the biomass utilization pilot project, there is a lawyer, Christiana Darlington, who works specifically with JPAs working on biomass, who will take a look at the foundation documents and the bylaws and make any recommendations for changes. At the recent election of the RRA in January, one of the items they vote on is the authorizing entity, which has been the County of Lake and remains it. So it's, there, the funding in APGP comes to the RRA, the county, because the county does the fiscal portion of it. And so the indirect from the APGP covers that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I was a little off on my, like, an analyzation, so thank you for that.
You were there like a year or two ago, but we've made a lot of progress.
And I haven't been on.
It's okay.
Any other questions here? All right, open up to the public for this item. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this portion of the presentation?
It's quite a few of the directors in the audience.
Yeah, and they're all sitting in the back, so I don't know what that means. Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport, and also a member or alternate on occasion representing the City of Lakeport on the Risk Reduction Authority. And I just wanted to speak to that point too. I mean, having been on it now for two or three years, we've made a tremendous amount of growth in those past two years. And that's largely due to the cooperation and having access to the RCD's staff in there and kind of pushing forward. So I, I agree absolutely with, with Supervisor Sabatier in regards to, you know, one of our main focuses being that sustainability aspect and be able to funding ourselves. I'm not quite sure, I can only speak for myself. I'm not quite sure that the APC model would be, would be the direction that we'd want to go. But I mean, that absolutely is always on our mind. I mean, I think every, every meeting, we, you know, we, we get disgusted by, you know, how much of our money is having to go to saving for the eventual every-other-year audit and, and then what is not available for us to move. So we're making strides in that department. But I also don't want to underestimate just the general convening aspect of this group as well. You know, we have similar JPAs that just consist of the three jurisdictions. This one consists of, you know, tribal membership, water districts, fire, fire districts, and, you know, other, other entities as well. You know, addressing some really big issues that only can be done at that regional level. I mean, a lot of our focus, obviously, has been on wildfire risk. But I mean, we also have a number of other risks that we're subject to. So I just wanted to compliment RCD, you know, and then Terry as well for, I mean, we've made some great strides in that past two years. So I would say we've, we've moved beyond the infancy stage. I don't know quite where we're at in that process, but I'm looking forward to the next couple of years, especially in regards to some of the work that's coming out of this biomass subcommittee thing. I think that absolutely is going to have some options for us being a sustainable entity monetarily in the future. And then, but at the same time, the convening aspects, the best-fit management group, you know, providing that additional partnership to some of our, you know, smaller grassroots organizations can't be overlooked. So I'm very, very excited to have been a part of it for the past couple of years and looking forward to the, the future couple of years. And glad to have Supervisor Crandall back on the team as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber that would like to comment on this presentation? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board if there's any final thoughts before we move on to the next one. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item B. I think I read it off, so it's the presentation for the Mediterranean oak borer.
Have you been promoted to panelist, Julia? Julia Clickard? You should get an invitation in just a second. And since you're in the chamber, I guess you don't need your camera. Okay.
Hello, I'm Julia Clicker, the newest biologist at Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. I'm going to present our Mediterranean oak borer action plan, which includes a lot of identification and just a lot of general information we have gathered about how we, as a community, can address this impact. Do you want to note that Mike Jones, Curtis Ewing, and UCNR have been incredible resources in the creation of this action plan? Generally, this presentation will cover four major topics. Tree symptoms, what you'll see in the field or on local property. Mob information, specifics on the beetle and its life cycle. Woody material treatment, what to do with downed branches and wood. And survey and outreach, Clerk's reporting system, other resources, and our plan moving forward. First of all, let's talk about the Mediterranean oak borer and how it impacts trees. Scientific name is Xyloborus monographis, but for this presentation, we're shortening down Mediterranean oak borer to mob to save a little bit of time. The most prominent question about mob is, how will we be able to tell if a tree has it? This information is vital in identifying an outbreak when it first begins. Here are the main symptoms to look for. Black trellis systems in the shallow layers of the tree, the xylem. Tiny circular holes in the bark. Pale boring dust around the holes in base of the tree. Patchy dieback starting from the tips of the branch. Now, please keep in mind that there are other stressors that can cause similar changes in a tree. Water stress, especially after this hot summer, can cause large amounts of browning or dying within areas of the tree. Climate change, heat, fires, these can impact trees in a similar fashion. High winds can physically damage trees and branches, opening wounds or killing off small sections. And of course, there are other pests or diseases, such as sudden oak death or bark beetles. The best way to check for mob are to look for the symptoms previously mentioned. Black trellis system, tiny circular holes in the bark, pale boring dust, and patchy branch dieback. So let's see the biology and life cycle of mob. This is for the identification of both the actual insect itself, as well as the life cycle and impact. Mob is a small reddish-brown beetle. As you can see in these images, its coloration can vary between individuals and sexes. These insects are very small and are rarely spotted during inspection unless the tree is physically cracked open to see the galleries. One way differentiated from the other oak bores and brocher beetles are these small raised bumps on the back of the shell, a hard covering that protects the flight wings of the females, right here. While females have the bumps, there are some other sexually dimorphic characteristics between female and male mob. The female are notably larger, closer in size to pencil lead, and capable of flight. Males, on the other hand, are smaller and flightless, but feature this rhinoceros horn right here. Now, onto its eggs and general life cycle. A single unmated female can be the start of infestation. When she arrives at a new branch or tree, she begins to lay unfertilized eggs that are developed into males. She can then mate with the males to produce fertilized eggs that will become yet more females. Females continue to expand the galleries and mate until they leave the parent gallery system to attack the same host tree or a new tree, beginning the cycle once more. Now, within those trees, each can house two to three generations of mob. It takes about five to eight weeks to develop from egg to adult, which means they can have two or more generations within one year. Now, they do have a period of inactivity. In California, with our climate, mated females over winter within their galleries, and then their peak emergence period begins in late winter or spring, about when the temperature can reach 80 degrees Fahrenheit. Generally, our safest estimate of their inactive period is between November and January. This is the period we would want to take down infested wood, branches, or move its woody material. The peak is between March and May, which is the most dangerous time to prove or move such material. Now, let's look at their actual impact on trees. Now, let's look at their actual impact on trees. When they burrow, their galleries appear in these black trellis systems. Mob move from the tip of the branch all the way down to the trunk. They rarely split off to go back and up an unaffected branch they passed by. As the mob move down the branch or trunk, their galleries become even more crowded and well-developed, eventually cutting off water flow and ultimately girdling the tree. That's not the only danger the galleries possess. The black color originates from the fungus that they cultivate. Now, all ambrosia beetles have fungal associations. Mob is associated with Raphalia and Fusarium in both its native range and in California. Female mob carry these fungi in pockets, Mycandra, above the mandibles. When a female attacks a new host, it inoculates the tree with the fungus, which then spreads to the tree's xylem or sapwood. The female can also pick up hitchhiking pathogens that can establish inside the tree during their excavation. So, let's look at how it can impact our county and local areas. Well, it has some preferred habitat characteristics. We can see that it favors elevations below 1,500 feet, but can tolerate 1,500 to 2,000 feet. Lake County has an enormous range in elevation from 640 feet, which is easily in its habitat range, to 6,900 feet. What we should consider is that mob is almost exclusively found in oak-dominated stands. California oak woodlands range from 500 feet to 3,000 feet, a perfect range for mob in Lake County. Unlike in Europe, mob is much more specialized in California. Generally, it most commonly attacks white oak, more specifically valley oak in California, while the California black oak has only seen a single tree affected in extremely limited attack. How does this impact us? Well, here's a list of the more common oaks within Lake County. And let's reference it against species of mob attacks in California. As we can see, all four species are found within our county. This is a wonderful map created by the University of California Agricultural and Natural Resources, UCNR, on their website for monitoring oak borer. It took years to estimate exactly how long mob has been in California, but now we can see the enormous jump in affected area between 2021, 2023, and just last year, 2024. Just last year, its distribution has grown to encompass most of Lake County. So, yes, it is definitely a danger and a lot closer than we'd like. So there's a big question of what can we do if we do suspect mob? Pruning of infested tree limbs could be viable, although it's currently unknown how far the fungus spreads past the mob galleries. Once the mob infestation reaches the trunk of the tree, pruning limbs will not remove mob. Infestation will move downwards from its initial point. You'll want to take pictures of the branch before it loses its leaves in order to help identify which branch needs to be pruned. The branches must be pruned all the way up to the trunk in order to be effective. Avoid cutting the woody material or moving it before you treat it in order to stop mob from dispersing to other nearby trees. As for treating the wood, pruning should be done during the tree's dormancy period in order to minimize stress on the tree. Now, once finished pruning or moving infested wood, chipping is a frequently used option since it can work with a lot of material and you can treat the wood right after chipping. Any handling or moving of firewood should be done during the low activity period of mob, again between November and January. The chip should be one inch or less in diameter. Please avoid moving after cutting. Remember, a single unmated female can start infestation, so by moving chips, it can create a whole new infested area. Prune fire, uh, prune firewood material should be safe after two years in an area, give or take. Of the woody debris treatments, burying is not really recommended. The wood would need to be buried deep enough that beetles could not see light to escape, so at least five inches below the surface. Next, solarization uses tarps to expose the woody material to the sun's heat over a long period of time in order to kill off the fungus in the mob. Solarization isn't considered effective or practical. It won't work unless vented with fine stainless steel mesh of one millimeter or less. It is also no longer recommended by Oregon. Then, burning. This is helpful because burning can occur during the key winter months where mob is dormant. Burning can also be performed with a portable incinerator on site, which provides flexibility and treating numerous trees and reduces the risk of stress since you don't have to move the wood. Finally, heat treating wood is a possible option for firewood since it starts with, um, since it's already used when transporting firewood or other woody materials long distances in order to prevent the spread of diseases or pests. You'll want a minimum of 104 degrees Fahrenheit for 60 minutes when treating the wood. It's achievable by a broad range of firewood kilns and available even if the climate or season would prevent solarization or burning. Using kilns to treat wood also means it doesn't necessarily need to be chipped, bypassing that step. Now, the next step of management: early detection. Locals know their area the best. You see it every day, you see the changes and what looks wrong. That's why early detection depends on recruiting community members and creating an easy source for reporting and learning about what to do when you do find mob. Our main method of early detection is the project page and survey on our website. We created this with intent of being an easily accessible source of information for the community as well as allowing us to take a rough survey of affected trees. We can then follow up on submitted information, assess infestation severity, and provide this resource to UCNR and local and state monitoring programs. You can find the mob monitoring project on our homepage, right here under Projects. Our biological technician, Hannah Shapiro, and our operations outreach coordinator, Rachel Avia, did an incredible job putting together the website, dashboard, and survey that we're going to see. Below the informational sections, there are two buttons near the bottom of the page. The first button will lead to our mob survey dashboard. In a short summary of this page, here's a basic blurb about mob along with a link to our project website. This graph shows how many reports have been submitted over time. This little legend shows what the colors of the heat map mean, with colder bluer colors showing a higher concentration of mob sightings. And this is the actual map. You can zoom in and out and scroll around the county. Finally, this column on the far right shows some basic information about each point on the map. Let's go back to the project page. This second button leads to the survey. Overall, this survey is meant to be an early warning and reporting tool that the community can access and ask some basic information such as date and location of the mob-infested tree, as well as some questions about if you've seen specific symptoms. Ultimately, it's meant to keep our communities informed and share what we've gathered with local and state agencies. We hope to pair this mob survey with another form of early detection: tracking the transport of firewood or woody materials. We've already contacted local forest management professionals in order to start up this program, but we're always looking for more contacts. Generally, we hope to use something similar to the mob survey to track where firewood or downed woody material is being transported. The end goal is that we can compare these, um, compare these results against where mob is spreading to see if there's a definite link and what the community can help do to prevent it. On the subject of community, here are numerous agencies we are currently working with. It's been incredible for helping the spread of the program, and of course, we're always looking for more groups. We're currently working with Mike Jones, Curtis Ewing, to create short free train seminars for both professionals and general public. For arborists of, or forestry management, trains would include information on the signs and symptoms of mob as well how, as well as how to mitigate the spread on work sites. For the public, the presentation would focus on the signs and symptoms, how they can protect their trees, and contact information with willing professionals who could identify mob infestations. Overall, our goal is to use the survey and reporting tools to gather data in order to obtain a grant for management, similar to Oregon's mobile burn unit or other methods as the situation develops. Clerk is also planning to host a Q and A open house, meeting that provides space for the public to speak with the professionals about any further questions they have regarding management. And that's it for the presentation. We'll end on an image of mob, of a mob beetle that was taken by our team in our very own Lake County. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present on the Mediterranean oak borer.
Thank you.
Anything to finish with, Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you so much, Julia. And Will, I just want to, um, this is just one of the best illustrations of the work that the RRA has been doing over the years. We talked about this in our meetings. Um, thank you, Curtis, for being here. Dr. Jones is one of our experts, too, that is, um, always helping us and contributing. Actually, he's the one that alerted us to mob, I think it was in 2020.
Two, three.
Three, early 2023. Yeah, so we quickly produced the town hall with, using the funds that we had gotten through the grants and through our contributions. So one of our really great programs. And it's up on our YouTube channel for everyone that wants to look back on it. It's a little bit different. That one has Mike Jones. So I think both of these presentations work really well together. And then Clerk just jumping in, both feet, head first, actually. That was Tracy Klein because she started to notice mob in the Sota Bay corridor area in South Lakeport. Noticed that it happened, um, it started to really expand its footprint during the PG&E trimming last year. And we have PG&E in the room. PG&E has been part of these conversations to get their workers who are out in the field to adopt these best practices. So it really just started with these small conversations with the Risk Reduction Authority and through this collaboration, expanded to where we are now. It's been, um, it's, it, it has been about a year and a half, but we've made really great progress. It's still expanding all the way across the county, so it is critical that we adopt these practices unilaterally and really spread the word about not moving firewood. We know that that unfortunately has been the cause, probably, of getting it all across the county. So I just want to pause here. I just want to express my deep gratitude to Clerk and the RRA staff for picking this up and running with it, because that's really what this collaboration is about, is leveraging all of our resources and our relationships and our funding sources. And I, I just want to invite Curtis. You, do you have anything that you want to add? He's our reg, he is our expert who has been critical for helping us collect data for all tree mortality over the past, I think, four years now. So thank you so much, Curtis.
You're welcome. And I'm very impressed with what you are doing in Lake County. You're way ahead of the other counties. We are now up to seven infested counties. There was a big jump after two years. It was originally discovered in 2017, but only the fungus was identified. The beetles were thrown away. Then the beetles were recollected in 2019 in October in Calistoga. And that is clearly the center of where the infestation started. But unfortunately, the wood was just cut and piled on the side of the road. And we know what happens to wood when it's cut, especially oak wood, and piled on the side of the road. People were, in fact, just taking off the infested parts and hauling that away for some reason, which is a little strange. Maybe they were doing woodworking with it. It's, it spreads pretty efficiently because, as Julia said, they are, um, they just sit in the wood during the winter. Um, so that's when the wood gets cut up. That's when it gets spread. She said that unmated females can infest trees, but actually, most of them are mated. The thing is, when they leave their trees, so those ones have an extra generation that they can complete. And we have dissected trees in November. They're still laying eggs. So there's at least three, maybe four generations a year. We believe now, um, Mike Jones and I have been tracking trees since 2020. There were trees that were infested in 2020 which are still alive. So it's at least five to 10 years, and it was probably in Napa since 2010 or earlier. So it had a lot of time to spread. We're just starting to get some anecdotal evidence that treatments with fungicides may have some, at least, effect where they allow the tree's own defenses to wall off that fungus that Julia mentioned that's carried in their jaws. And that's what actually kills the trees. That clogs the sapwood of the tree and kills the tree. So it's just anecdotal. We are looking for arborists who have been treating trees to give us feedback. I have one really good collaborator in Napa. So he's been treating trees since 2017. Many of those are still alive. He's been, just gave me some wood for the first time that showed that after he treated it, there's almost no infestation. The fungus got walled off and it was able to put down six, seven new rings with very minor effects on it. You can't do this at a forest scale because it would require treatment every year or two. But, um, and I can't recommend anything, but there's just a few fungicides that are certified in California. If anyone has any questions that I can answer, I'd be glad to do it.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Spatier, and then Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I, I totally understand the issue with the firewood. You knock down a tree or you find a tree that you cut up, and then eventually you sell it to somebody. You got to bring it to their location, or they have to come and pick it up and bring it to their location. And then it hangs out until eventually it gets used. Uh, so I totally understand that. I feel like that is a bit of a, I don't want to say underground economy, but it's, it's not, you have to know who does that type of work. There's not too many that are out in the open that are advertising and things like that. Um, and so how, what is the plan to try and to get people on board? Because I see here you have potentially heated up to 140 degrees. Who has access to those things that can make that happen? Because they can't just sell firewood exactly only where they got the firewood from. That limits their economy. And so what, what is the potential plan on reaching out to them? Maybe a co-op access to a heating device, a kiln of sorts? I don't know. Like, I, I just, I don't have an understanding of how we solve it. I understand the issue completely. And I know that you're working on, wondering what your thoughts are and, and where you're going.
Uh, well, uh, like you said, that's, the actual getting a kiln for this is kind of difficult to do. But, so the first thing is education and making sure everybody's aware of it, which is kind of what made it get up on the radar to begin with. But we are planning an open house in the next few weeks. It's probably going to be at the Carnegie Library if we can get that straightened out. We have, as Julia mentioned, a database of all the tree care companies. There are a lot of them do firewood on the side, and it's a way to get to the people that are actually engaged in it. But if you can identify that this is logs that shouldn't be moved, then that's the first step of not moving them. And at least at this point, you know, I haven't seen it so widespread that it's going to impact either those people's livelihoods because there's enough wood elsewhere. But that's why we wanted to keep it that way and try not to spread it any more than it already is. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Yeah, I was on a, a meeting for the biomass utilization pilot project for the North Coast Resource Partnership. And one of their partners is working with Cal Poly Humboldt on a mobile kiln that is panelized so that it can be easily broken down and moved. And so I have connected both Clerk and the RCD to that organization. I think it's a nonprofit, I can't remember the name, that's working with Cal Poly Humboldt to say, if you get that figured out, we want to buy some.
And, oh, so sorry, am I, is it possible to just finish? I appreciate the answer, and obviously, we're looking, we're still seeking solutions and just putting it out there. It is an emergency. Uh, it has been an emergency for at least, what, three years now? I believe is when we first declared it. Something along those lines.
It's a different emergency.
But still, it's within the tree mortality issue.
It's not. Um, and that is something for us to consider, is a separate emergency. Napa County did do a separate emergency. Our existing tree mortality is tied to the drought.
Specifically drought.
Not tied to the drought. So it's something for us to consider. That's why we're doing all of this investigation to understand how the county should move forward and if and when we should do a declaration.
And I can appreciate the clarification. I still think there's a connection to a drought that makes it less possible to fight against this infestation. So I see that as having a small connection to it. And I just think in emergency, is there a way to looking at maybe permits for those who are cutting down firewood to try and get them to understand? And here are the rules for those who are going to be doing, like, what's available to us within any kind of emergency that we're dealing with to try and really slow that down? I'm open for anything that you guys come back with, um, but I appreciate the, the presentation.
I'll just add one more thing that, uh, you know, we're working on a proposal for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, round three, which is due, uh, March 14th now. The, this will be the third proposal from Clerk, and the first two focused on community chipping, fuel breaks. This third one's going to focus on addressing, the bulk of it's going to focus on addressing this issue and, uh, identifying trees and having a way to actually deal with them on site. And there will be funding to support it. Uh, we're still working on it. And there's a little bit of question if those funds are actually going to be available, but we're still going to go after them and pursue it as if they are.
Thank you. Supervisor Owen?
Yes, I was wondering, I know you cannot make a recommendation on fungal, fungicides for those trees, but are there a list of them that would, that are effective? But are there a list of them that would, that are effective for the trees on your site, on your website?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Right now, we're searching for funding and a lab, say at UC Davis or at Berkeley or Humboldt, that would be willing to carry out a more rigorous analysis of them. I mean, I could supply you with a list by email of what's certified for California. I think there's three.
Okay.
One is a topical and two are injected into the tree. The arborist, that's, who was actually the person who first discovered the beetle in 2017. He's the same one I'm still working with. He is, he cut out the insecticide because it was too expensive. And he is switching over to just the topical because it is much less expensive, not only for the chemical, but obviously for application. So I'm kind of working with him to try to work up a proposal. And hopefully, within the next year, we'll start doing a little more with that.
And following up with that, would there be something possibly on the horizon that could be sprayed perhaps on the downed trees?
Well, that's a completely different question. That's going to be something fairly toxic. And I think you would have much more issue with that.
Okay.
Another thing that can be done with the firewood, we just had a meeting in, with the LA County people because they have another invasive beetle, which is getting close now, unfortunately. Here, it just made a jump to San Jose, which is much worse than Mediterranean oak borer. And they are trying to get some of the, of the first firewood regulations in place in LA. They would not be something with like the force of law behind them. They'd be more like recommendations and trying to coordinate because it's really not feasible to try to, as you said. It's a, it, it's a diffuse industry. And to try to regulate it is just not possible. This has been something we talk about every year for, I've been here for almost 10 years and it's apparently something that's been talked about for 20 or 30 years. But if you have a yard and you age this wood, I mean, literally, if you cut it in the fall, all the beetles will pretty much be gone, 99.9% by July of that year. We recommend two years just so people don't cut corners, which, you know, when they cut corners, we get that full year. So you could start to think about just having people aging their wood in one place before they disperse it out. And at least that cuts out one stage of the dispersal. That's what I, that's what we kind of came to the conclusion on, is some system like that for LA to slowly spread of their pests.
Awesome. Thank you.
And if anyone else has any questions when we take a break here shortly, if you want to talk with him on the side, we'll go from there. Anything else from the board? Thank you, everyone, for this. Did you have anything else?
Mike Jones has his hand up in the Zoom room.
I didn't see that. Go ahead, Mike.
Good morning, Chair, Crandall and Supervisors. Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Extension Forest for Lake. Curtis kind of just caught some of the things I wanted to mention, but I, you know, there is no regulation for this pest, so it's all about education. And yes, aging wood onsite before you move it is a very effective strategy for limiting spread, at least through human pathways. So, you know, that doesn't require treating all wood. That certainly is an ideal goal, right, of having certified treated wood. But making sure you're not moving it right after you cut it is really important. So hopefully, that doesn't create too much of a barrier. And as, and as, as you all mentioned, Evan mentioned, plenty of cut wood in Lake County for firewood that we can kind of maybe think about aging oak before we spread it too far. And then for the chemicals, you know, we, I, I just hesitate to, to really provide any information on chemical control at this point. We have done no research. We have no data to suggest efficacy or side effects or unintended impacts. So it also can produce a false sense of hope. We don't know if the trees that are surviving that we've been working with arborists on is because it's a slow rate of infestation within those trees or they have some natural resistance. So I, I hesitate at this time to really push forward with providing that information. Certainly, talking to an arborist, they'll give you that data. But again, we have no idea if it's a viable treatment option for this particular pest. So give us time to kind of start studying those questions and really get, get some robust answers to, to, you know, provide landowners and land managers and stewards to, to, before we kind of start promoting some of those ideas. But thank, thank you all for having this item on the agenda. This is an important topic that we're dealing with. And it sounds like, as Curtis mentioned, we need to start talking about the invasive shahol bores as well and G-SAB and some of the other oak pests that are kind of in California and potentially future challenges in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to finish with? Thank you.
Just wanted, just one last thing is, like he mentioned and in your presentation, you know, less than a year ago, we were talking about solarization being the way to do it. And now it's not. So with Dr. Jones saying he's still studying these, you know, different fungicides, it's, it's going to keep changing, so.
You had something else?
Yeah, just a brief question from the end user. Burning fungus wood, is there any potential issues there? Just to also educate out there or nothing known at this moment?
Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Extension Forest again. No, and, and the other nice thing about this particular pathogen, at least the ones we've been studying with our colleagues at Davis, is that it's, it's really only active within the tree. So you can chip this material and use this chip as mulch and, and not have the risk of it spreading to, to other trees. So really, we're just talking about standing, living trees being the important part of the disease complex. But once that material is processed and chipped, it's, you know, viable. And also burning it is not present a health risk as far as, you know, this family of fungi has never shown to be a, a human pathogen.
Yeah, and also, it's not going to spread to other trees. I don't know if Mike knows this, but the lab in Berkeley inoculated our monitoring trees at the arborist yard directly, and it didn't infect any of the trees. So there does seem to be some sort of strange synergy between the beetle and the fungus to actually get it into the tree. And that's another thing we need to research because it's anecdotal at this point, just like I was saying with the fungicide. It's anecdotal. It looks like it may work, it may not. But it's another aspect of its biology. And often, some of these systems that are even fairly simple can take 10, 20 years to really understand. So we, we, we need to be patient and we need to raise awareness so that we can get more people interested in doing research on it.
All right, thank you. With that, I'm going to close this item before.
We already did.
I don't think we did public because we've got.
Okay, well, I'll open it to public input. I thought I did.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I think you did, but there was two items, so I didn't speak on the first one. My name is Jason Tarmino. I'm your local government affairs rep from PG&E. And I wanted to say that I've been participating in the tree health, forest health for maybe the past year. And we're actively engaged. I had a meeting yesterday with the regional manager who handles all of our veg management for this region. He's been having meetings about the Mediterranean oak borer, about changing practices, best management practices. So we'll be, continue to be engaged on this because we're one of the biggest tree cutters in the state. And, you know, being a good partner is important to us. I know that everyone is concerned about their bills, but we do a lot more at PG&E. And so we're engaged on this issue and many others and appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? Apologize, I know it seems like I'm rushing, but we have a giant agenda, so. Okay, no one on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board in case there is. All right, with that, thank you very much, Terry, Will. And thank you very much for the presentation, Mike and Sir. I didn't catch your name, but, all right. So we are closing this. We're going to move on. I wanted to know before I just take this quick break, should we hit 6.4 first? Or do we, are we obligated to do the hearing since they're dated at 10? I don't know the.
So long as it occurs at 10 a.m. or after, as far as the public hearings are concerned, your board has discretion and make.
Okay, so we can go on to 9:30 and then move forward from there. Or not 9:30, but 6.4.
But depending on who may be appearing for the public hearings, your board may want to notify them in advance as far as an estimated time of when they.
You never know. Anybody here for the hearings at 10 o'clock? Okay, just the staff. So it, it'll be a little longer than 10, probably a little past. But anyhow, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break briefly and we'll come back to 6.4. All right. Helen. All right.
Oh, we lost one.
All right, it looks like we're coming back into order here. We're going to go ahead. Okay, we got, I got everyone coming back. Our 6.4 was the 9:30. Consideration of introduction of new staff of the Lake County Resource Conservation District and annual, annual update of the Board of Supervisors. And Terry, it looks like you're introducing this.
I am. Thank you very much, Terry, logs and chief climate resiliency officer and tribal liaison. I'm happy today to bring Julia Sullivan, the new executive director of the Lake County RCD, which has undergone a transformation in the last two years. That includes hiring a full-time staff, securing millions of dollars in funding and much more. And I'll turn it over to Julia.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, everyone. I am Julia Sullivan, the new executive director. I prepared a 15-minute presentation, although I know we're significantly behind. So I'll try to breeze through this and share some highlights with you of the past year. So just want to start by sharing our organizational purpose. The Lake County RCD is dedicated to the locally-led, long-term, sustainable conservation and stewardship of natural resources and agriculture in Lake County, California. And we are currently working to actualize this mission through several different program areas. So we have watershed restoration, sustainable agriculture, forest health, the Lake County Fire Safety Council and climate partnerships. And then we have operations, which is less a program and more a collection of activities that enable and support the rest of our work. I just want to provide a snapshot of kind of our annual budget growth over the past five years. You can see prior to this current fiscal year, we were hovering at or below about half a million dollars in terms of our annual budget. That's including both our county tax income and our income from grants and contracts. And in this most recent fiscal year, that transformed dramatically. So we currently have $2 million in grant funding and expect to be trending in this direction for the next fiscal year as well. And that is entirely the result of the very dedicated work of a couple consultants that took up the Lake County RCD as a bit of a passion project, one of whom has since joined our organization as staff. Worked really closely with our existing staff at the time and our very committed and capable board to apply for and bring on tons of funding. So we're grateful that they kind of catalyzed this next phase of the organization and excited to share some of what that looks like with you. Before we dive into it, just wanted to share kind of a programmatic breakdown of our funding. So you can see the vast majority of our funds right now are kind of concentrated in the Lake County Fire Safety Council and forest health program areas. With, as well as a good chunk kind of in watershed restoration, which represents really the historic kind of bread and butter of the RCD. We have a sliver there for sustainable ag, operations and climate partnerships as well. We currently have a staff of 12 and five of those staff members are part-time. The seven that you see pictured here are all full-time staff, myself included, that have joined the organization since July of this past year. So I won't go through each of their names individually, but this includes our finance team, myself, our ag staff, and several valuable additions to both our forest health and fire safety council programs. So I am relieved to have a break from hiring for a bit and thrilled that we have such a capable and full team. Okay, I want to just touch on briefly each of our program areas. I will not speak to all of the, all the funding that's listed here, but I did want to include it just to give you a sense. just to give you a sense for the different sources that we're pulling from to support each of these program areas. We have a handful of mitigation projects funded by Caltrans, both at Middletown Trailside Park, as well as along Highway 29 near the intersection with West Lake Road. And we're also fortunate to have some funding from the California Association of Resource Conservation Districts to support the Kalanapo Wetlands Restoration Project, which is over at the Wright Preserve in the Big Valley Wetlands area just south of Lakeport. It's a really exciting project to restore 32 acres of historic wetlands, reconnect them with Clear Lake, and I think a good example of the kind of watershed restoration work that we want to be doing more of moving forward. Just a few images here of some site prep and tree tubes, seedlings going in at Middletown Trailside Park. I will breeze through these, though. Next is our Sustainable Agriculture Program. This program is all of six months old, so we had Noah Cornell join our team as a soil and water specialist back in September. And he's done a great job kind of helping us manage a handful of small-scale projects, but also really define the direction for this program. So I wanted to share a few highlights there. We have a couple pots of funding that are supporting some technical assistance and outreach-oriented work right now, including hosting a two-day workshop that will be facilitated entirely in Spanish in early April at Six Sigma Ranch focused on the topics of agricultural soil health and irrigation efficiency. Noah will also be working with irrigation operators, so anyone who utilizes a drip irrigation system, to conduct free efficiency tests, so distribution-uniformity evaluations. Those will test the efficiency of those systems and provide recommendations for how to improve it. He'll also be hosting a handful of additional watershed management workshops this spring. So that's an example of kind of the outreach-oriented work that we've been doing. You all may remember that we also partnered with the Community Development Department to submit a pre-proposal to the Department of Conservation Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program last month. We're hopeful that we'll be invited to submit a full proposal later this year, and that if that were funded, we would be able to take on a half a million dollar kind of planning effort to do a really robust assessment of the ag sector in Lake County and ultimately an evaluation of some different incentivizing tools to support producers and to support agricultural lands conservation, whether that's through easements or direct payments to farmers. We're excited to hopefully explore some of those questions. Moving on to Forest Health. Historically, the RCD has really focused on working in very close partnership with the NRCS to provide technical assistance directly to private forest landowners and support them in enrolling in federal cost-share programs like Equip. We are committed to continuing doing this work. It's a really important part of our portfolio, but there is no shortage of Forest Health work to do in Lake County. And so in addition to this kind of core area, we're excited to expand the horizons of this program a bit and take on some larger kind of landscape-scale projects. So we're doing that now. We applied to, as a partner, on a couple CalFire grants in this past round with a couple NAPA-based entities, so both NAPA RCD and NAPA FireWise-led applications that we were a part of. We're also applying for community wildfire defense grant funding to support some larger-scale kind of countywide initiatives, and I'd be happy to talk more about those later. Just a few images here of our Forest Health team doing what they do. That's Erica Lundquist in the center with a couple of our staff members out on a property providing technical assistance to a landowner. Okay, the Lake County Fire Safe Council. We have been incredibly busy with the Lake County Fire Safe Council the past few months. You can see on the left-hand side here, we've recently closed out three different funding sources, and I'll provide some highlights on each of those. So we were fortunate to have funding from the California Fire Safe Council through a couple different streams. The first is county coordinator. That funding supported all the activities you see on the left-hand side here. So almost 20 interviews to FireWise communities, 500 emergency go-bags were assembled and distributed to community members. We developed and hosted two pretty big countywide, all-day workshops that were professionally facilitated and designed to build really directly on this lineage of work that this network and organizations and community members have been doing in Lake County for so long, but has really served as a foundation to kind of, from which the Lake County Fire Safe Council is now launching kind of into this next phase. We had defensible space funding as well, which despite some very challenging delays on the part of the funder, this pilot project was a wild success. There was a really high interest, high demand from Lake County residents. We had almost 300 requests for services and ultimately treated over 107 homes. Lastly, we had funding, U.S. Forest Service funding through coalitions and collaboratives. That funding enabled, in part, hiring for my position, as well as our Conservation Program Manager. It enabled us to develop our Mobile Tool Cash Program, which we're in the process of rolling out now, that will provide free rental of critical tools and equipment to residents to complete fuels-reduction activities on their properties. And lastly, we completed a strategic planning process for the Lake County Fire Safe Council recently, which I'm happy to share our board voted to adopt last week. We went through several rounds of revisions. The final document is ambitious and reflects a lot of community and partner input, and we're excited to deliver on that strategic plan. Just wanted to share the renewed organizational purpose of the Fire Safe Council as well. It's inevitably a little bit wordy, but I think it's a great statement. The Lake County Fire Safe Council convenes partners to coordinate wildfire resilience work and standardized messaging across Lake County and empowers all residents with the educational, physical, and financial resources to proactively protect their family, property, and community from wildfire. So this has been, again, a huge emphasis of the RCD in the past few months. And then lastly, I won't spend much time here. John already spoke to the APGP funding and the biomass project. Those are part of what we consider kind of our climate partnerships. And then, of course, we have this separate category of funding which support our operations, this critical set of activities that are super important to our growing and evolving organization and extremely difficult to fund. So we continue to scrap for capacity-building dollars to support things like grant writing and partnership building and financial management, all of the activities that really underpin all of our program areas. We are building the plane as we fly it. So just want to leave you with a few kind of high-level takeaways. I hope I've conveyed to you through my fast talking that we've increased our staff capacity and our programmatic offerings a lot over the last year, and we are really committed to continuing to evolve to better serve Lake County. One channel for that energy is our upcoming strategic planning process. So we did just do this for the Fire Safe Council specifically, but are looking forward to taking on a strategic planning process for the RCD itself, starting this spring probably and going into the fall, so stay tuned for updates on that. We will definitely be soliciting input from all of our partners and many of the people in this room as we embark on that process. I also want to mention some of our regional connections. You know, I understand that Lake County is often left out of regional initiatives and different collaborations, but that is not the case with the North Coast Durable Collaborative. This is a coalition of North Coast RCDs, I think it's up to 12 now, spanning the whole North Coast region. And in addition to enabling us to partner on some regional grants and really exciting initiatives like the North Coast Soil Hub, this group of RCDs represents an incredible wealth of experience and knowledge for us to draw on. So Lake County RCD is an uncharted territory kind of as far as this organization goes in Lake County, but we have incredible models to draw on, incredibly supportive partners that have been kind of bringing us along through this transformation. Couple more here. I do just want to highlight our special district status. So we are a special district of the state of California. We're a governmental entity, non-regulatory, of course, but this does mean a couple things. It means we can serve as a CEQA lead agency, particularly when that comes to Forest Health work. This is a critical role. It can slow things down, it can be a bit of a bottleneck, and we are trying to equip ourselves with the knowledge and expertise on in-house, on-staff, to be able to play this role more reliably for our partners and within Lake County. The other thing I want to mention is that we're also able to contract directly with the county and with other government agencies, whether that's CalFire or Caltrans or CDFW. You know, we do get the vast majority of our funding through competitive grant rounds, but those require a huge commitment of time and funding. And in certain situations, when an entity, whether it's the county or another state entity, has funds available and secured and lacks the capacity to implement whatever this project, whatever project those funds are meant to support, the RCD can really serve as kind of the implementation arm for that entity and step in via a direct contract to make that work happen. Okay, last point here. I do just want to highlight our collaborative capacity. RCDs by design are empowered to work directly with private landowners, whether that's through our work with agricultural producers and farmers or private forest landowners. That really is the basis of much of our programming and ensures that we stay really grounded in kind of local realities. But in addition to that, I think that we are uniquely capable of convening partners and facilitating collaboration at multiple scales. I think at their best, RCDs can really be connective forces, and I'm super motivated. I know our staff is super motivated to continue figuring out what that looks like in Lake County and to kind of delivering on that promise. Yeah, so it's been a really exciting year, really busy. Thank you for the opportunity to share, and I know we're behind schedule, but happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you for that. It's, we are a little behind, but it doesn't, we need to know this information. I appreciate you still going through it, and we still are going to ask the questions and go through this the way we need to. So don't worry about that. I see we have one pin-up supervisor. Pyska.
So I am just incredibly grateful for this progress. It wasn't very long ago that Dr. Lyons was looking at shutting this down, the RCD. It was a skeletal board, skeletal staff. We had Lori, the only person staffing the Fire Safe Council, but a willingness from the community to engage. And that's really, I think, what was the driver behind all of this progress, is we have all of these partners who want to step up and do this work. And so the convening and the collaborating has really shown through, Julia, in both of your all-day events, bringing the partners together in the Fire Safe Council meetings, kind of bringing that up to the next level, and your capacity to write grants. And Megan's here, and that was several years ago that she came on as a consultant to help write grants, which is one of the things that we've struggled with here in the county. So this, and I hope everyone can see that this just goes much beyond fire mitigation, which is something that the RCD kept saying. We're more than this. We need to work on soil health and watershed restoration and forest health and ag, and those are all the programs that you're really growing by leaps and bounds. So I can't be more grateful to all of you for just digging in and pushing this forward because it was a heavy lift, and it still is, and you always have my support.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Terry, to add before?
I just want to thank all the RCD, the Executive Director, the former Executive Director, and board members and staff.
Actually, there is something else I want to add. You mentioned difficulty with funding, and last year we saw that with the defensible space grant through the Fire Safe Council at the state. Both Chair Crandall and I supported that program to front-load it because we knew how important it was to get defensible space programs out to those people that are unable or can't afford to do it, because we are only as strong as our most vulnerable people in our county. And so this is a program that we're going to continue to champion. We got 100 houses done this year, and I know you have high goals for the coming years. Now, the federal funding freezes are impacting a lot of the programs that we have. We have $10 million of community wildfire defense grants that have already been awarded and in most cases contracted out in our county, and those funds are frozen. So I am going on my trip to DC this week. That is something that I am prioritizing, making sure that those funds get released because we, there's no world where that's acceptable here. We have spent the last many years building the capacity, developing the contractors, staff for the RCD and Fire Safe Council. We have to continue to have this funding, or we're never going to reach the goals that we've set. And the goals that we have set is to be an adaptive community so that we can live with wildfire, and we know that's our reality in Lake County. So I am going to continue to push for those federal dollars to be released, as are our federal lobbyists, so I want you all to know that. The RCD's been developing a white paper for me to take with me to my policy committees so that we can speak directly to everyone that will listen, so thank you.
All right, so I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to come up and talk about this presentation, has any questions, statements.
Hi, Elaine Brown. Thank you so much. You talked about watershed, and there's erosion and beautification involved in our forests that have been burnt out, so I'll just read what I wrote. "It'd be great if eighth-grade grads and senior grads in the area and even surrounding areas, if they would plant an acre of forest for grad projects, then in 30 years, those students can take their families to see their work. There would probably be groups like the Kiwanis and such that could possibly be tapped into as funding sources. I heard from a former Cobb resident that Douglas firs are beetle resistant. It may not be a local pine, so some are into the original plant life." Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that suggestion. We are, both through our Fire Safe Council programming and also the Forest Health Program, thinking a lot about what it would look like to work more directly with local schools and develop educational curriculums in partnership with them. So funding-dependent, of course, but we definitely want to be able to focus more time and energy on that in the future, so thank you for that. Yeah.
All right, anybody else that would like to comment on this? Me on Zoom. I'll close public input and look to end this item. I really quickly just wanted to ask a question because I've seen collaborative capacity empower to work directly with private landowners. I know in my, all of our districts, there's situations where the private landowners own areas that are in some of the watersheds or in some of the older tributaries. Maybe that's something to look into because I know that there's a lot of blockages at times that cause flooding and whatnot, so we can look into that. It would really help, I think, with the, I know you have Scotts Creek, and, I mean, we all have these tributaries. We all have these outstanding situations that have been going on for years, not just five years, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will just share that we've been having some exciting early conversations with CDFW in the past few weeks about different ways that we might be able to collaborate. They have a pretty well-funded watershed restoration program, grant funding, that we may be able to access to support that kind of aquatic and terrestrial restoration work. So definitely eager to get more into that and trying to find ways that make sense. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close this item, and we appreciate, again, this presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move on to our 8.1. 8.1 is usually something else, right? Usually, it's usually close session, but anyhow, we will open up our 8.1, and I will start out by saying that we're going to open it as, we're sitting as the Board of Equalization. We're going to conduct some assessment hearings. First and foremost, the assessor staff's coming up to be present for the presentation and also answer any questions. We also, I need to make a quick announcement that if you're going to make public comments, I think now's the time. I think that's what we, Lloyd, go ahead.
So your board, your board has that option to take in public comment for these items under 8.1 through 8.4. Public comment is not required. Your board also may want to consider for these specific items, namely 8.1 through 8.4, if there is going to be any testimony that it should be taken under oath.
If there's anyone here for the assessment hearings? I don't see anybody. Is anyone on Zoom? All right, and so if there's any comments about this, we're not going to take them unless you're directly involved with the actually specific assessment. So I'm not seeing any. I'll go ahead and give the floor to you, Dave.
Hi, I'm Dave Schwenger. I'm the Assistant Assessor. Today I have Landai, our Chief Deputy, and Thomas, our Senior Appraiser. They'll be answering any questions for you. I'm just going to sit back. We're going through transitioning, teaching people how to present to the board.
All right, so I'll read off the first one because I neglected to do that. So consideration of stipulations for the following assessment appeals, number 11, 2023 DeSalzo, and B, 12, 2023, DeVita, and C, 13, 2023, Anderson. All right.
Mr. Chair, for the 11, 2023 consideration, we have a stipulation for it. The owner.
One second, sir. I'm sorry, County Council.
So for each of these items, Mr. Chair, your board may want to consider taking oath for anyone who is presenting the testimony.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I thought we just meant for the people that came, so I just, go ahead. Do you want to? You can use mine if you want.
With your right hand raised, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, that's a start. Well, that's a start at 11.2023. DeSalzo has agreed to a stipulation. We came to a conclusion. It was a change in ownership, market analysis done. And they, he came back with a lower value than what we had done at the time in, in 22. The problem, we didn't find anything. We redid the evaluation, looked at it, market analysis. We did not meet his value that he wanted. And, but we did see that we could lower his value to, from initially a 283 to 258. He agreed with that value. That's why the stipulation, he even admitted after the fact that he had had a outside appraisal company look at it. They came up with the same value. So we asked for stipulation for this. All right.
Are we, do we need to go on for any others or are we, right, ma'am?
So appeal number 12, 2023 DeVita Dialysis Center. The subject property was a newly built medical office for DeVita Dialysis Center in Layport. The property has a leasehold estate where the tenant, DeVita paid all taxes and expenses on the property, which qualified DeVita as the affected party. The structure of the lease is that DeVita had a custom building built for their own medical procedures, then sold the property to current property owner with guaranteed lease payments for 15 years. And DeVita pays all expenses. This is known as a triple net lease. The applicant contested the 2023 601 rule value, which was based on the Prop 13 valuation. This is a commercial building. The assessor used the income approach to determine the market value of the property per property tax rule eight. The applicant provided the assessor with rent agreement indicating an annual rent of 338,873. The assessor capitalized this annual rent using a 6.5% market capitalizations rate, adding a task component of 1.1119%, resulting in a market value of $4,451,884, which was rounded to 4.45 million. The applicant agreed with the assessor valuation and signed a stipulation.
The next one, 13-2023, you know, this one for Anderson, the owners disagreed based on the condition of the property that were basically, has had a modular home and we did it with saying, most of the homes around his area were not modular. Sorry.
Oh, I was, sorry, go ahead.
They were not modular. So we expanded our search and were able to see that for an expanded search, more modular homes were able to meet his. We agreed with his opinion of, it was a reduction in value. So we went basically, an expanded market comparison was made and showed similar properties supporting the applicant's opinion of value of 700, 590,000. And we accepted it and he accepted it for the stipulation as well.
All right. And so I think what we were discussing on the side was that with this agenda item, eight point one, with all of these different assessment agreements, or we will vote on all those together in just this eight point one. And then when we do eight point two and whatnot, we'll do the others. So if you want to, are you finishing on this one, one more?
That's it. We agree with, he agreed with the stipulation and it was an acceptable value.
All right. Okay. And so with that, if there's, if we agree with the recommendations and the agreements that have been in place, Supervisor Sabatier?
I just have a, a quick question about timelines. So a lot of these are, if not all of these are from 2023 at a certain timeframe that they submitted their appeal. Taxes have moved on. For example, I think the big one would be the DeVita one. Have they been paying their taxes based off of the original assessment? And are we planning to give money back? It would be nice to know what that might look like on our end, if there's money that's supposed to be paid back. If we agree today to lowering it by a million dollars, what does that look like as far as any clawback that comes with that? Because that's not available to me to understand how this impacts our potential revenues and budgets.
Thank you. The DeVita already paid 2023 taxes. With this agreement stipulation, both sides agree, we will process a rule corrections and the taxpayer will receive a refund for the difference.
Yeah, I get you. The, the issue that we have is that in the next presentation that we'll have, we'll go over it a little bit. But we have to follow the property tax rules. So we can't look at the implications of the budget or, we have to be independent. We can only determine if market value should be enrolled or the Prop 13 factor base your value based on their sales price should be enrolled. The lower the two is the basis for their taxes. On these appeals, they are, the, the way appeals are, or property taxes are deadline driven. So the only way to keep your deadlines open is to file an assessment appeal and that's why we have the board resolve them. But, but in this case, we, we can't look at what the implications are to the budget based on assessment appeal.
And I appreciate that. And I'm not looking for that to be a factor in any decision, just to basically understand what, what, what are, what is the impact overall in understanding, once we say yes, what is due, just to at least make it more apparent.
Yeah. So, so if there are, for a million dollars, you're looking at 1% of that is the refund of the ad valorem tax, the base tax, and then the, any local bonds and issues that are a percentage of that.
I would like to add into your questions. Like in 2000, in 1978, California voters passed Proposition 8 would allow temporary reductions in assessed value in cases where a real property suffers a decline in value. When the market value of a property on January 1st lien date falls below the Prop 13 factor base your value, the assessor will review the property's assessment and enroll the lesser of the factor base year value or market value.
All right. With that, if there's any action, Lloyd?
So upon your board's discussion of this, your board may move to approve the stipulations for the properties described in this agenda item, eight point one, in particular, under the assessment appeal numbers 11, the properties identified in the assessment appeal numbers 11-2023, 12-2023, and 13-2023.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And we'll move on to the next one. Eight point two, consideration of request by the assessor's office to continue the following assessment appeal applications. A, 05, 2023 Wendy Jamison and B, 9, 09, 2023 Simmons, Siemens Healthcare Diagnostics Incorporated.
Appeal number 05.
We need to, oh, we need to do the.
Well, actually, just for clarification that the oath that, and just for purposes of the record, that the oath that was taken at the.
Eight point one.
Of this would also apply to eight point two, eight point three, and eight point four.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
Appeal number 05, 2023 Wendy Jamison. The assessor valued the property changed, as a change of ownership at current market value. The property was sold at a tax auction for significantly less than its market value. The subject was valued by means of desk appraisal, considering average condition using comparable sales and enrolled at market value as a whole. The applicant filed an assessment appeal stating that the property had damage that resulted in it not being livable at the time of transfer. The applicant submitted photographs showing the damage required maintenance and debris left behind by previous tenants. A request for cost to cure the damage was made by the assessor. The assessor has reached out to the applicants multiple times, but has yet to receive those figures. On February 12, 2025, we made another phone call and follow up with three emails to request the cost to cure, seeking resolution for the applicants. All comparable properties indicate that the whole value of the subject property is in the range 250,000. So we are working with the applicants and request a continuance.
That's for both?
And the next one for continuance, we have appeal number 09, 2023 Siemens Healthcare Diagnostics. Siemens Healthcare granted a limit power of attorney to Duchamp, McMillan, and Associates, who filed assessment appeal on behalf of Siemens Healthcare Diagnostics for 2023 tax year. Siemens Healthcare Diagnostics leases equipment to Sutter Lake Side Hospital in Layport and pays business property taxes to Lake County as they are the owner of the business property. For 2023 tax year, the assessed value was calculated based on the total cost of $211,083 of machinery and equipment, using depreciation schedules provided by the State Board of Equalization. The assessed value of 220,583 includes a 10% penalty for failure to file the annual business property statements as per revenue and taxes in code section 441 and 470. The assessor has reached out to the applicant. The applicant provided additional information indicated that the business property statements was mailed to the assessor with a postmark date of May 3rd, 2023, which is considered filing timely. The assessor reviewed the documents and removed 10% penalty, resulting in assessed value of 20530. The assessor is currently working with the applicant and requests a continuance.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the first one. The second one, I do see a signed document saying they want an extension. The first one, I do not see a signed document that says they want an extension. And you mentioned that you are working with the applicant at this moment. Do you have any updated document where they've signed the extension? Or are they not in favor of the extension? Just kind of curious about that situation.
We have emailed back and forth with applicants. In the last email we received, they, they request a continuance.
The, this application is not set to expire. So you have a two-year limitation to hear it. So we're still within that. So each side can, can, can request a continuance. So it's, yeah, she, if this was up for the two-year extension, she would have to sign and we'd have to have her waiving the rights for the two years. But we're, we're not at that point yet.
I know that typically we meet quarterly regarding these assessments. And this here says the application is from May 2023. So wouldn't that expire before our next?
It's from when the, the bill was issued. So that's the change of ownership date.
Okay.
So I believe we're still, we're still good till November. But we're going to have a hearing in May.
Well, I, I just see here that it says received from the County of Lake, the assessment appeal application on April 3rd, 2023. So I, I don't know what date.
I'm not looking.
I'm assuming we have to do an extension or else it concludes. If it's possible, if we can get a copy of that email?
Yes, we will provide email. Yeah, let's see.
Any other questions? All right. Did you have something, Lloyd?
So after board discuss, board discussion, your board may move to continue assessment appeal application number 05-2023 and 09-2023 to a date certain. And we'll have to specify the date for purposes of this motion.
Go ahead, Joanna.
That date would be May 20th at 10:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, what's your?
My question was, is that enough time to get to a conclusion? Okay. I, I wasn't sure.
All right. So we have a five zero, well, any opposed?
I, I voted aye, but I hadn't had a chance.
Okay. All right. So we have a, let me just start this again. I'm going to ask for any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Move on to eight point three, consideration of request by the appealing to continue the following assessment appeal application number 02, 2024 through nine, 2024, 09, 2024, Donica LLC. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I have a little handout I'm going to hand out to help explain it.
Thank you.
It just summarizes a little bit what we're going to talk about since it is, it's quite a, there's eight escapes that they're appealing. Basically, the applicant is requesting a continuance for the 2024 appeals. We didn't put it with the other continuances because this is, we're approaching this one a little differently. For the eight years of escaped assessments, the assessor would request that these appeals be dismissed for, on basis that Donica LLC is not the affected party, is not entitled to any relief or refund. So just to back it up, this is, we had to escape them eight years of assessment because they failed to report a change in ownership in 2011 where they had a lawsuit against Meridia and Donica took over the leasehold and improvement values, just the buildings and structures. The lawsuit was recorded as a public document on 3/14/2024. So they took ownership in 2011, but it wasn't recorded with us. But we, so we, we have a little bit of a timeline. But something David said a minute ago, we're going to take a step back and say, we have to follow rules. And one of the very first rules from property tax rules, California Code of Regulations is Rule 1. These are the rules which govern all assessment appeals. So it starts off there where the state says, these are your rules. Now, there's a whole, several in there after Rule 1, but Rule 301, definitions and general provisions. So they really define each one of our roles, either Appeal Board or Assessor Rule. But it also defines the affected party. Person affected or parties affected is any person or entity having a direct or economic interest in the payment of property taxes on the property for the valuation date. That is a subject of the proceeding under this subchapter. And there'll be more subchapters. You can turn and you'll see property tax one is just one liner, but it has a lot of one page, one liner. But it says, hey, follow the rules coming. And then the one that we highlighted there is on Prop Rule 301. So it's right out of the BOE. We have to follow these regulations, all of us. There's a little timeline here, the facts. So we just issued escaped bills in February 22nd of 2024. We can only go back eight years. We went back eight years because they hadn't submitted anything to us and we discovered it. And so, and then, and March 14th, 2024, the property transferred. By interest enough, you see above, that's the same day that they, they recorded at the office that they had taken ownership back in 2011. Attached the closing document, statement between Donica LLC and Lake County Tribal Health Consortium detailing the transaction on some of the pages in the back. You'll see that's a title statement from Fidelity, Fidelity National Title Company. On that, it shows that the tax bills were paid in title, but you'll notice it is on the debitor's side and not the creditor's side. They submit that they have standing because they had credits for. They submit that they have standing because they had credits for it, but I'm looking at this from Fidelity, there's no credits here to them to have standing. In other words, they did not pay the tax bills. The standing is who paid the tax bills here? They did not. So that's why, basically, the assessor requests the assessment appeal board dismiss appeals 02-2024 through 09-2024 Donica LLC is not the affected party, has no standing to appeal the escaped assessments.
Any questions on this? Supervisor Spatia?
Would the standing move on to the new owner of the property?
If they wanted to appeal it, they have the rights for these escaped property. We escaped them for not paying taxes for all those years. And, and the property can't be sold until that gets paid. So conveniently enough, uh, well, they registered and it was paid right before they could take, but not by them. Yes, not by Don, uh, not by Donica, no.
Was it brought up during the title search? Were they aware of it during the title search with Fidelity?
That's correct. That's, that's correct. The, the bills were issued, the escapes. The, the owner was in a public with the city with abatements and established himself as the owner of the property. And that's when we researched it and escaped those tax bills to say the entity that was being billed, he had taken over in a lawsuit. So we redirected those taxes and put them on the property before he liquidated the property.
Any other questions? All right. So with that, I don't know if, Lloyd, you wanted to read that off for a motion again, or if someone had to, is ready to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, I have one final question. I apologize. This is all brand-new information, trying to figure out what's going on. The amount that we were asking originally to be paid because of the eight years that were not done has been paid in full. We're just asking the wrong people to pay it at this moment in time. So we're asking to get rid of the appeal, or those people paid it once they dissolved the property and, and got it purchased?
We sent the bill to Donica. You can see the values here, what they were for each year. Donica did not pay them. In fact, it was paid out of escrow by Tribal.
Okay. But it was paid?
It's paid.
Okay. That's, that's just, I wanted to make sure.
That's why Donica doesn't have standing because they, you have to, that's why we opened with the tax rule 301. You have to be the one paying it to have standing. They did not. In fact, they didn't even own it. But they did when we sent them the bill. But they had to get it paid before they could sell it. And Tribal did that.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for myself.
All right. So we're just looking for action.
So what's before your board is two things for your board's consideration. One is the request for a continuance by this entity, Donica LLC, who filed this appeal. The, the, on the other hand, the assessor recorder is requesting that your board dismissed the appeal for, for lack of standing. That's before your board today. Your board may want to just confirm whether or not any representative or, or individual or entity from Donica is present, either via Zoom or, or in the chambers today. It appears that they, that nobody has appeared for the appellant's side on behalf of the appellant. But that is before your board today by, by motion to either continue, uh, continue this, uh, this appeal or, or to deny the appeal on the basis of the evidence and arguments that was presented to your board today.
And so, real quick, is there anyone on Zoom, or is there anyone in the chambers before we make this motion? Okay, we're ready for action.
Can I, I do that in one motion for both parts?
Uh, yes. So it would be, if, if it's a denial of the appeal, it would be the, uh, a motion to deny the assessment appeal application number 02-2024 through 09-2024.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we are now on eight point four. Consideration of withdrawal for the following assessment appeal applications, A, number 73-2022 McMillan, and B, 06-2023 Blakely Hole. And, go ahead.
Appeal number 73, 2022, Mr. Robert McMillan purchased the property in '22 and contested the 2022 601 rule of 339,693. The 2022 rule value was the valuation on the lien date, January 1 of 2022, and based on the Prop 913 valuation of the previous owner. When a change in ownership occurs, the assessor is required to reassess the property and roll its forecast value. However, at the time of Mr. McMillan's appeal filing in November 2022, the assessor office had not yet reassessed the property. The subject property was vacant land, included oaks. After reviewing and the property and analyzing comparable sales, the assessor determined that the market value of the subject property at the time of transfer was 120,000. The applicant agreed to this valuation and withdrew the appeal. And appeal number 05, 2023, Wendy Jamison.
Blakely. Uh, Blakely Hole.
Oh, sorry, that's right. Blakely. Sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. Appeal number 06, 2023 Blakely Hole. The applicant contested 2023 rule value stating that the current market value of her property is below the assessed value. Upon review, the comparable sales indicated that the market value of the subject property has dropped below the Prop 13 base value, and it is estimated at 1.3 million as of the lien date, January 1, 2024. When the market value of the property on January 1 lien date falls below the Prop 13 factor base value, the assessor will review the property assessment and enroll the lesser of the factor base value or market value. The applicant agreed with the assessor Prop 8 valuation of 1.3 million for 2024 tax year and withdrew the appeal.
All right. Any questions or comments? Head Supervisor Spatia?
I, I do have a question about the first one. I apologize, the McMillan.
Yeah.
Just timeframe-wise, here it shows received assessment appeal, November 29, 2022. Last thing I see is an email saying withdrawing, and that's from February 14. How are we still within that two-year timeline to get to a final position? And is this decision today part of that timeline? Or is there something else that would have triggered that it was done before the two-year timeline?
There's, there was a, this was heard previously, and he's already signed an extension.
Okay. So there was an extension within that. Okay. Was not aware of that. Thank you.
All right. So we'll be looking for action on accepting the withdrawals.
So your board may move to accept the withdrawals on the listed assessment appeal applications under item eight point four, and that would be assessment appeal application numbers 73-2022 and 06-2023, and deny the appeals in those respective app, assessment application numbers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we got through those. We're going to get back to our next timed item, which is six point five, A, consideration of priorities for fiscal year 2026 community project funding, and B, discussion and direction to staff on which priorities to further pursue for potential submittal to Congressman Thompson.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, just for clarification, now you're sitting in as the County of Lake Board of Supervisors.
And, and we have now, we have closed the Board of Equalization, and now we will be sitting as the Lake County Board of Supervisors to accept this. And so I'll give the floor to Matthew Rothstein.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. And I'm joined in the room by Benjamin Rickelman, who's our Deputy County Administrative Officer, and others for this item. Staff are seeking your board's direction regarding submittal of fiscal year 2026 congressional community project funding priorities. Congressman Thompson has asked that only the highest priority projects are submitted, and his office's deadline is Friday, March 7, 2025. Past successfully funded projects have enjoyed broad-based community support. You may recall the Lake County Sheriff Administration and Operations Center project, for example, repurposing the armory, has twice been supported for funding. Our Full Circle Project feasibility study update was likewise funded, and the Middle Creek Restoration and Kelseyville Sidewalk projects are two further county-specific submittals that have been supported. Your direction will be appreciated with regard to which projects should be further vetted for potential submittal. Congressman Thompson will value your affirmation of the county's priorities. It's important to bear in mind, it may take 18 to 24 months to receive funding from the time of submittal, and projects cannot include requests for ongoing multi-year funding. So not every project is a strong fit for this particular opportunity. Mr. Rickelman and I will briefly introduce three project concepts included in this agenda item, and we'll invite your questions after the initial overview is provided. So first, the South Lakeport Regional Water Resiliency and Fire Protection Project is a cooperative intergovernmental effort between the City of Lakeport and County of Lake. Staff proposed submitting this as a $7,211,500 request. Funding would extend the City of Lakeport Municipal Water Service to a currently unserved County of Lake jurisdictional corridor along South Main Street to Soda Bay Road. Spanning approximately 8,000 linear feet of water main, 58 two-inch services, 16 hydrants, and four fire services, this project aims to significantly enhance regional water, infrastructure, and resiliency. This project would likewise enable future opportunities for interties with the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians and County of Lake's own special districts, setting the stage for a consolidated and robust regional water system. After the posting of your board's agenda, a letter of support was also received from Chief Willie Cepeda as Operational Area Fire Rescue Coordinator. And we have Kevin Ingram, our Lakeport, City of Lakeport City Manager, and Glenn March, our Public Works Director, Robin Bore, our Special District Administrator here, to speak to any questions you have, once again after the initial overview. The next project concept for your consideration is the reentry housing and workforce development for those returning from incarceration in Lake County, California, project. This $5 million request seeks funding to develop individual living space for at least 20 justice-involved individuals and engage those eligible in local workforce development initiatives. North Coast Opportunities Build and Home Hardening Programs may be among those local programs, and NCO has provided a letter of support for the project. Your board will recall, $5 million in Community Corrections Partnership Funds have already been dedicated to this project. The total cost is anticipated to be 24 million. Lakeport Police Department and Lake Family Resource Center have provided letters of support in addition to NCO for this project. And Wendy Monfrans of Lake County Probation is in the room and here to answer any questions regarding that particular concept. And now Benjamin Rickelman will provide a brief overview of the third concept.
All right. Go ahead, Ben.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman. I'm a Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm here regarding the Lake County Healthcare Education and Innovation Center. I have with me Kamlyn Fasano, who is a business development specialist with Sutter Healthcare, who's a major partner on this project, and Nicole Flora, the Executive Director of the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. And then online, we have Tim Gill, who is an Assistant Superintendent with Kanakta Unified School District. I'm going to let Kamlyn lead the main part of this presentation. We presented on this project about a little over a month ago, so we'll keep it fairly quick. But just want to give you an update on it and why it's, we think, a great project for the community.
Thank you, Ben, and county staff. I appreciate your time this morning to review this project for consideration. Next slide, please. So this project idea first came about through conversations that, uh, the Sutter Lakeside Hospital CEO, Tim Stevens, had with community college executives about workforce needs specifically around healthcare, the healthcare industry in Lake County, and what did that look like? As you can see from the slide, healthcare and social assistance makes up currently about nine, a little over 19% of the workforce in the county, and that is only expected to grow. I would also like to note that under government is where we find our education workforce as well. So by 2030, we expect that the healthcare industry to be right around 23% of all workforce in Lake County. But what we wanted to do was figure out what were the areas of need. Next slide, please. So through research and partnerships, we have identified, not only is there a critical need for nursing and physicians, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, but there's also a critical need developing for support staff. The first five areas that we identified for critical needs would be MAs, so medical assistants, physical therapy assistants, certified nursing assistants, licensed vocational nurses, as well as licensed clinical social workers. So the idea was, what do we do, right? How do we address this critical need? Next slide, please. So it was the idea of Mendu Lake College, Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, Redwood K-16 Collaborative, and the Lake County Chamber of Commerce to host a healthcare workforce summit. The summit was held last April, so April of 2024, with leaders from healthcare industry, education, uh, public service in the form of fire departments and EMT workers. And they spent an entire day collaborating and identifying what the needs were, what the gaps were and barriers, and then what could be potential solutions. So key challenges that were identified were, there's training gaps, there's barriers from high school to college, there's also career pathway gaps. And then, being a rural community, we have sometimes trouble with retention of medical staff. So an idea was to grow our own, grow our own workforce. What could we do there? So myself, Tim Stevens, and our Sutter team proposed a solution. There is a vacant building on the Sutter Lakeside campus that was currently not being used. It's around 6,600 square feet, and we thought this could be a perfect workforce development center. But we didn't want this just to be a Sutter healthcare project. We really wanted it to be a community project for all of Lake County. So we, next slide, began with a small group of stakeholders that represented education, all three healthcare, large healthcare industry partners in Lake County, as well as county government. And we started brainstorming, what does a workforce development center look like? Is it mobile? Should it only be healthcare? Should we bring in other industries? Should we bring in other industries? And this group, over the course of three months, came to the finalization of this Lake Care, Lake County Healthcare Education Innovation Center. It would be brick and mortars. They did want to, they agreed to take advantage of the 6,600-square-foot building on Sutter Lakeside property, being a part of Phase One. And then we also extended our community stakeholder to a wider variety of organizations. And I do want to look at the mission statement just really quick and bring your attention to that, because it really is going to serve as a hub for education, training, professional development, and as you'll see next in the presentation, there'll be a community health impact as well. Next slide, please. Project Partners. We have project partners across industry, education, and community. While this started with a small group of six organizations, we have grown to 16, all with input on how this center should be developed, organized, and run. Next slide, please. So this education center will have three key areas. The first is our Spark component, so students promoting awareness of real-world knowledge. This is a field trip-based study program for 5th through 8th graders. There'll be interactive simulations, guided tours and demonstrations, workshops and mentoring. I will have to say, on a recent field trip to a simulation center in Sacramento, we witnessed real-life robotic dummies, mannequins, that had a pulse, that could give birth, that could simulate birth, and even have retinal display. So if you're having a stroke and a pupil pops and dilates, it actually does that on the mannequin. Imagine being able to learn how to stop the bleed when you're in 5th grade, and how that can translate into maybe saving a family member's life. The second component of this training, of this center, will be a training component. It'll be a training component for our high school students, as well as adult education. Working currently with LCOE on their MA and CNA program pathways, we'll also be working with the high schools on what they're, what is called their CTE healthcare pathway programs. The idea is for when students graduate for high school, they'll be able to sit for a certification and be hired immediately. So this will include not just work-based learning, mentorships with healthcare organizations throughout the county, but also real-world experience. And then part of the training also is for professional development for current healthcare workers. The third component is all about our community. So community-focused aspect, which really emphasizes health literacy and lifesaving, lifesaving skills for all of our residents. This could come in stroke support groups, diabetes education, lactation services for expectant moms, and even babysitting certification. These are several programs identified that could help the community at large. Next slide, please. So we have identified three key phases that are needed to bring this project to fruition. We're currently in the planning phase. The anticipated cost is $1.5 million, and this will be facility design, initial build-out plans, curriculum development. We have applied for funding to help develop governance and operation structure for the center. We anticipate this to be a partnership between our education entities, but it's really too early in the planning process to share all of those specifics. The build-out phase will take about 12 to 36 months. This will be the building remodel, purchase and implementation of the simulation equipment, curriculum finalization, and when the build-out is complete, we are going to begin with programs that are ready. So students will be, begin visiting the center as early as August of 2027. And while we are developing a robust curriculum that spans 5th through 8th grade, high school and adults, we may be starting with one or two programs in 2027 as the rest of these programs reach their finalization. Phase three is full-scale operations, program expansion, expansion, community development, and continue to have innovation in healthcare education. Anticipated yearly operation is $650,000, and again, we expect that the yearly operations will be education-institution partnerships. So now we'll get to the funding. So next slide, which is why we are here today. Our total, sorry, next slide, please. Our total anticipated project cost is $8.75 million. We are here requesting $3 million for the community project funding. We have secured funding in, we have secured funding from four areas that you can read on the slide. We have pending applications totaling over $2 million. And then we have in-progress applications in addition to this request with the EDA, California State Appropriations, as well as the County Medical Services Program. Now, you've heard from me, business strategist, but I would like to turn it over to Tim Gill, because he really wants to talk about what the impact of a project like this can mean on the students of our county. So Tim's online, if we can unmute his microphone. It's Tim's iPhone. And if we have a glitch, I have his statement that I can read. If you guys trust me, I'll be glad to read his statement if we, if we're having some technical difficulties.
Well, just wait one second, and let me know, Johanna, if you...
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
There we go. All right, go ahead, Tim.
All right, thank you. My name is Tim Gill. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services for Kanakta Unified School District. I've been involved in career technical education programs in our high schools in the county for about 20 years, and I'd just like to take a moment to talk about the impact that I believe that this project can have, not only on the quality of our career technical education programs as, in the healthcare sector, but also the impact that that could have on the workforce pipeline that Kamlyn was, was talking about. Over the last 10 years, all of the high schools in the county have done an outstanding job of, of increasing the number of, of career technical education pathways that are available for students. At Lower Lake High, we have currently 10 pathways, 10 different training programs for students. It's usually a three-course sequence, and, and some of those courses, like our culinary program, has a save, a serve-safe certification. And, and, but the, the, the piece of this, as far as how it, how it impacts our workforce, is that our students graduate from high school without having had any real-world work-based learning opportunities. We just don't have that, that infrastructure in place. If we have a facility like the Healthcare Career Innovation and Simulation Center, that we can take students to beginning as early as 5th grade to develop that spark, so that when they get into high school, and if they're part of our, our either patient care pathway or, or emergency services pathway, which could eventually end up with certification as an EMT, we will actually be able to have work-ready students graduating from high school. Because basically, what, what we've been doing for decades in the county is that we train students through the 12th grade, and then we send them on their way, hoping that they go out and either go to the community college, go to four-year university, go to trade school, get some kind of certification, and then we hope that they come back. And if we truly want to grow our own, as far as, as our, our health career pathway industry, or our healthcare industry, and if we want to grow our own workforce, then we, it's critical that we have a facility like the, the Innovation and Simulation Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to close with?
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
All right. Matthew, do you want to close anything out before we get to questions?
I don't have any closing thoughts. I just know that we do have representatives of both the other projects here, and appreciate your consideration of all three of these meritorious concepts and your further remarks and discussion.
All right. I just have one real quick, and I'm just not remembering, but do we commonly request three, or do we, have we done more before, or is it usually three and then? Yeah, okay. All right, that's my only question. You had one, Supervisor Iska?
Well, are you asking us to just pick one?
No.
Okay, good. So it wasn't super clear in the memo. Okay. And then which, like, I know in the past, we've been really strategic about where we're asking for these funds to come from, so that they're more competitive, and we're not asking for the areas that are extremely competitive. So I'm guessing that, well, can you just elaborate on the research we've done to make sure that we're positioning these the best that we can?
Yes. So these projects would be in likely the USDA Rural Development or the Economic Development Initiative categories. Both of those are actually fairly highly competitive, but these are the projects that enjoy the broadest-based community support of what was received this year. So typically, like I said in the preamble to this item, the projects that enjoy the broadest community-based support are most likely to be funded, so that's why we're bringing these forward.
Great, thanks.
Vice Chair.
Just before I ask questions, I was going to clarify if we were going to hear from any of their staff regarding the three, or, or if not, that's okay. I was just curious.
See you.
Yes, generally, we don't do a presentation. However, with Sutter, it was publicly stated that they would be given a presentation, so we combined it, but that's why we have the other staff members here. And if they want to come up, with your board's pleasure, to give a five-minute overview or even something from City Manager Ingram, just about the need and discussions that have been going on.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Members. I'll, I think Matthew gave a very good overview of the, the project, so, you know, I think that, you know, firstly, just wanting to thank Congressman Thompson's office for the outreach that they do in regards to this matter. There's been quite a bit of, you know, peace in there. You know, obviously, nothing's guaranteed going forward, but I think that, in particular, this South Lakeport Regional Water Resiliency and Fire Protection Project is, it's ripe in the sense that there's a, there's a large community need there. You know, I'm very happy that, you know, Director Glenn March with the Public Works Department here is pushing, you know, to the completion of the South Main-Sota Bay Road Corridor Project, which I think has been 20-plus years or so. So I think the ripeness exists to get a water line underground there before we, we put that road project in. I think that, you know, the recent dropping of the local responsibility area fire hazard severity maps only further, you know, puts, you know, the need for this type of project to be put in place. I believe that entire corridor area down here that's being discussed from the existing city limits all the way down there to Manning Creek is either in very high or high designated or proposed designated lands. It's no secret that there are, you know, existing small water systems out there. I think the official lingo is non-transient water systems. Those are essentially, you know, private water systems that serve a certain number of individuals that requires them to, you know, have some sort of reporting to the state. They're not physically community water systems in the same sense that some of the other special districts are, but we know that those are systems that for years have been impaired by either quality or quantity issues, or just the sheer, you know, cost and requirements that is necessary to comply with, you know, state regulations on those systems. And those include some big players out there. And then there is the, of course, the fact that we have a highly-developed industrial corridor that contains several propane tank farms, a building supply store, the transfer station, that are high-risk areas to, to fire, and we are currently operating without any fire suppression system in that area. So I think that, you know, the fact that, you know, this comes with a $7 million price tag, I think we're obviously know that that's going to be something that's going to have to be negotiated out. The, the likelihood that we receive a full $7 million ask is probably unlikely, but I think, you know, giving a whole kind of comprehensive aspect of what the project is, I know just in my experience crunching the numbers on this for the past, you know, 10 years or so, that when we first looked at this project, it was only about $1.5 million. And so I think it's also stated that time is of the essence there, that you wait too long and all of a sudden that's going to double again. So I think there's absolutely, and what I'm primarily here for is regardless of whether this is supported as a community-funded project, or it's very possible that there are no community-funded projects this year, but I think regardless of that fact, I think the, the need for the cooperation between the City of Lakeport, the County of Lake, the Lakeport Fire Protection District, all of our fire protection districts, I think this is a very needed project that at, in any rate, that this won't be, this won't be energy lost, even if it's not selected, that this is something that we need to continue to, to make a high priority. So certainly open any questions, but I think Matthew gave a very good overview of the physical aspects of the project.
And then we have a couple more questions, but go ahead, Wendy.
I too would also like to thank Congress and Thompson's Office. They've been very helpful with feedback, and Matthew as well, and all of our community partners who are joining in our request for our proposal. This is in addition to the housing project we're already developing. We're adding a workforce development portion to it, where we would work with NCO, the Build Program, and their home hardening program, so we can train people who are going through using our services and having job development skills come to them while they're also in our program. So our hope is that individuals will be working on building the project, and then eventually move into the project and have some ownership in it. Then they'll also have the opportunity to work on the home hardening project that NCO has already received funding for, for the Clear Lake Riviera. So I think this makes our whole housing development kind of complete, where we're going to get the top two needs of people who are coming out of incarceration with housing and job skills, and put them on the right path to succeed in Lake County.
Is there anyone else before I go through with questions? Okay, Supervisor Sabatier, Vice Chair, then Supervisor Iska, so go ahead.
Thank you. All good projects. And I know that Supervisor, or sorry, Vice Chair Rasmussen, or maybe it was Supervisor Iska, anyways, asked about, what are you asking from us? Because here on the memo, it says which priorities to further pursue. Do you want us to prioritize the projects of 1, 2, 3, or just equal projects? Because I have personal preferences as to which one I would prefer to see over others, so that we don't go for the easiest, we go for the most impactful. But kind of curious as to what you, I, I'm kind of left in a cloud as to what exactly is being asked of us.
Thank you, Chair. We weren't going to ask you to prioritize, only because we've only proposed, presented three, which is what we generally do. We don't know how they will be vetted in DC. What we don't want to do is leave anything off the table. We have, we had such a tight timeline on this, from time of notice to turnaround, that it, I just think that, I don't know if you could develop a consensus to prioritize 1, 2, or 3, but we've never done that before. What we've done is submitted all those presented in that the board supported. What we've done is submitted all those presented in that the board supported because again, it goes back and forth or we may not even get out a subcommittee on in some of these so you don't want to limit the number that you do or I don't know what the priority setting would serve at this point in time.
Yep.
All right. Good. Vice Chair?
Well, to that point of Supervisor Sabatier's, I could see where that that may come up down the road, but at this point, I'm definitely in favor of submitting all the projects to get those in the system, starting with the Healthcare Innovation Education Center. I think that's a huge one. It's it's it benefits the entire county. You know, they mentioned it, you know, with it being the entire workforce and then we have all of our schools, our colleges, everybody is is on board with this and there's just a lot of benefits down the road to economic development and, you know, training our own healthcare professionals here. We know it's difficult to to recruit those folks in. The the provision or the housing, the workforce development there is another critical component of our community. That's that's a great project as well. And then the the fire, you know, the wider system on South Main, that's been a huge need for a long time. There are severe fire dangers down there and we just we don't have any effective fire suppression systems down there at this time and that water is is critical for those protections. So I'm I'm in support at this point of, you know, submitting all of these projects and, you know, if we have to define it further later, we can.
All right. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I'm in support of all.
I'm in support of all three of these and I agree with the prioritization too of having these people's services first and programs first, but I am concerned of the high price tag on each of them. They're higher than we usually submit for and I'm worried about them being competitive against each other.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public to see if there's anyone that would like to comment on 6.5. So we'll go ahead and start in the chambers. Chief, if you'd like to come up.
Good morning, Board, Chair. Thanks for this opportunity. I actually want to speak to all three. I didn't know I wanted to speak to all three, but I do. Obviously, the fire suppression system on South Main is is a huge concern for us. As recently as this last June, we had a transfer station fire that demanded 68,000 gallons of water be trucked in in an attempt to fight control and bring that fire under control. That's a lot of water and it ties up a lot of resources. So any any of those incidents down there are going to pull and stress this our county and our other fire districts' resources to bring in and help fight the industrial development that we've had down there and those those other businesses that are down there as well. It is very demanding and the potential for for loss, both economic and structural is pretty high. So firstly, I would voice my support for that project as well. Secondly, for the and I'm sorry, I don't have the names of all the projects in front of me, but the housing coming out of the corrections facilities and the workforce development for those folks, I support that. Would love to see that. Had some initial concerns, but after reviewing the project closer, really have come to to like that project as well and what it means, especially since our department interacts with a lot of the homeless, having the county homeless shelter. We interact with a lot of the folks that need additional behavioral health services because we we have all those services located here in Lakeport and for them to have access to that and the housing and the workforce development is just critical to help them get their foot going down the right path. Lastly, the the workforce, I'm going to call it workforce development for our and the education for our kids coming out of the high schools. The fire chiefs did a informal study. We found that folks that we bring up from our school system and train here stay here or tend to stay here and folks that we bring from outside stay here for one to two years and then disappear again. So rather than being a training ground for folks outside of our county, why aren't we growing the training ground for our folks here? And I believe and Chief Sapata is not here to back me up on this, but I believe when we looked at just the EMT program that we're bringing into the high schools in the last two years, that I think there was something like 15 to 19 other career fields that those folks could branch off into just by their EMT certificates. So all good stuff. Want to voice my support for all of them and wish the county well in its submission to get these funds brought back to the county from Washington, DC. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief Wrights. Anyone else in the chambers? All right.
Michael Green. I'd be remiss if I didn't stand up here and support the South Water, South Main Street Water Supply Line project, which has kept me up at night, not just as a recovering former supervisor, but as a city council member before that. The need is so urgent and it's billed as a regional water supply project, but in terms of the fire risk that we're trying to mitigate, that's regional fire risk too. When you have propane farms, you know, large-scale hardware in the lumber stores, depending on when that fire happens and if it's in a high-wind event, that that could pose a regional fire risk to the communities east of there for sure and some potential for mass casualty events. That said, I'm with the chief. I love these other projects too. And one one advantage, I think, if I do recall, of moving all these forward now is if there is some back and forth with the Congressman's Office to suggest ways to refine it, that that's that's a helpful exercise. I can think in particular on the South Main Street project that there may be some advanced planning that we would have to do to update some previous studies of how how stuff works out there. So that's just it. I support all of them, but I'm very, very fond of the South Main Street project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the chambers?
I have one.
Was there anything to add or? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I am really impressed and really like the the programs and I like bringing the career paths to the high school. So what Willie Sapata and the fire department's doing in some of the schools here, I would like to see that expanded as well as some of the law enforcement and the nursing and a lot of these programs. So I I'm really happy that those are moving forward. Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else in the chambers, we'll go ahead and go to Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. This is Margot Cambara, Lake County resident. I have a comment on the Lake County Healthcare Education and Innovation Center proposal. As the chief has noted before, Grow Your Own Concept has great potential, especially for retention of our young people. And I understand the focus of the program to target physician level at the assistant level because the training can be provided locally and the students can be placed immediately and employed. What I would suggest is for career growth and meeting Lake County's healthcare needs that another component of the program be incorporated, perhaps at a later phase, and that is to include training at the physician level or the physician's assistance level. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? All right. If there's no other public comment, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board and then we'll start with Robin. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'd like to thank Kevin for his collaboration and support of this project as well. Some of you may be aware, we have $2 million set aside to deliver this project and $2 million won't get us very far. So we do, I believe that we have pretty much a full plan, environmental, right-of-way, all of that kind of stuff already identified. And so we have turned it over to our engineers to verify the status of what we've actually accomplished and I but we believe that it's basically a shovel-ready project and we would have that $2 million there as match. We're also looking at what other things we could do in the interim if this funding doesn't come forward with that $2 million, if that's a tank and, you know, additional locations for the fire department to be able to pull from water and and that and any inner ties if this is fully done.
Thank you.
So it's actually a $10 million project.
This this. This one doesn't include any inner ties and stuff like that that would be needed. And I'm guessing he's probably got a lot of design money in there as well to make sure that, you know, that we're fully funded. So yes, a water project of this magnitude could end up being $10 million, depending on how far we go and how many inner ties we do.
Okay.
Do you want to have another question? Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I know we're not prioritizing, but I'm still going to mention, I think that the Innovation Center is the most upstream. I think that if we can provide our youth access to opening up doors, that we're going to see a whole lot better outcomes in our community. And so I just I think that to me is my number one because it has such a long-term impact. I understand the water situation. I'm trying to forget about the past in order to move in the future, but these are things that could have been resolved in the past. Unfortunately, we've hit some hurdles and some bumps. Just need to have a little amnesia and move forward with that one. But to me, I just can't help but remember Department of Justice report, those who do one to two years of college have a 75% less likelihood of going to jail and we need to get our youth activated into career pathways at a higher level than what is already being provided at our schools. I appreciate what they are doing at our schools, but I think this is the next level. I have seen it at Conocdi Education Center when that was a health magnet school. Those kids, many of those kids still work at our local hospitals today. And so the impact of getting them enthusiastic about those type of pathways, I think, makes huge differences. And so just wanted to at least put my two cents behind that one.
Thank you for that. Vice Chair?
Yeah, just a question and I know our CAO staff and our our office is going to be, you know, communicating heavily with the Congressman's Office and working on these. As I understand what the the Congressman's initial amount for his entire district would be 15 million, is that do I understand that right normally what he puts out?
Congressman Thompson is able to submit 15 projects as opposed to 15 million.
So there's no.
It has been common that projects that we've had funded were in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Those frequently have been reduced from higher amounts and the Congressman's Office has generally encouraged us to make their office aware of the comprehensive project.
Okay. So would as you're communicating, is that something that will come back to us on any if we have to make any changes on any of these submission amounts or?
If I may, Chair. It'll come back to the board if there's significant changes. Otherwise, this is a really fast-moving train back and forth with DC getting it refined to the point where it actually can get submitted to the subcommittee prior to full committee review. So we'll make that. I mean, I don't foresee any significant change, but if there is, we'll bring it back to the board. But it'll be a quick turnaround. It'll be tight. So I'm just making you aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Just final comment. There is also a Senate. I don't know what it's called. It's not Community Project Request. If we're looking at large regional concepts, maybe we need to make sure that we get in touch with our senators for the state of California and check in as to what that timeline is. I do not believe we've ever submitted a Senate community project or regional project, but I think this is one of those times where we're we may be cutting ourselves short if we don't try.
All right. Yes, so I'll just state that I I support all three projects. I did ask a couple of questions here and there, but maintenance is not something that can be funded by these by these appropriations. So yeah, because I brought up a couple of things and I did, I was thinking about roads as well because we have roads plans, but at the same time, I don't know if that's determined as maintenance or what. So I know it has to be shovel-ready projects or something like that. So I also was worried about our senior centers with the situation with the OAA. I don't know how that could be implemented with this though because it's a I don't it has to do with giving food and other things like that. So I don't know how we can quickly turn around something like that. So I'm in support of these and if there's not any other comments, we'll look for action here. CEO?
Thank you. One last comment. What we'll with your board's approval, what we'll do is for the fourth, and I know we're missing two of you, but if you've affirmed today, we'll bring back the resolutions required for submittal on the fourth because of the tight turnaround on the seventh.
Okay.
With your permissions, of course.
So do you need action or just direction?
Just want to make sure everybody's amenable to that. I know that, okay.
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
All right.
Do we need action or just consensus?
That can be done via consensus, direction to staff.
All right.
Yes.
Our direction to staff is as such. Thank you very much for the presentation and for the work you put into this. All right.
Thank you.
Close this item. It looks like we are at 12. However, we have quite a bit of things. Is there some simple ones we can get through real quick and then take the break or?
Well, I hope Elise Jones' items are simple. She is too, and she's been here all morning.
Who's that? You said who?
Elise.
Elise, Director Jones.
I think that one.
I don't know.
Okay, yes, come on up. Wanted to make sure because I know that. So this is I'll read them off. Sorry, I was so we're starting at 7.3. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Manzanita House for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Years 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25, in the amount of $728,000. I will give the floor to Director Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. Yes, these are Board and Care Services people. Manzanita House, I believe, has eight residents and we are completely tapped out there. This is for people on conservatorship who step back down into the community. So it's a critical service of bringing people home and it is actually kind of a good thing. It is a good thing that we are increasing the contract because that means more people are coming home.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a brief comment. One, thank you very much for both 7.3 and 7.4 for the level of detail in the memo. Really appreciated that. I didn't have any questions for you regarding those amendments and not really looking for a response, but concerned about the local, the mandates with the situation going on at the federal government with where Medicaid will be going. Obviously, nothing has been done yet to make changes, but concerned that we are still held by state mandates and not quite sure how that's going to work out, but appreciate the comments and appreciate the details. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'm going to open it up to the public. All right, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Manzanita House for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Years 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25, in the amount of $728,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in one second, County Council.
Let me add, Mr. Chair, and authorize the chair to sign.
I amend my offer to and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 500. We'll move on to 7.4. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Aurora Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalizations for Fiscal Year 24, 25, in the amount of $800,000. And we'll give the floor to Director Jones.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair, Board. This is not such a nice story to tell. We would always like to decrease our utilization of acute psych hospitals and in particular with youth, Aurora is a facility that takes many of our youth and we continue to see increased levels of acute psychiatric hospitalizations occurring post-mobile crisis benefit implementation. And so we're hoping again that those numbers stabilize as as time goes on, but we do have to ensure that this level of care is available.
Questions? Open it up to the public. Anyone on Zoom? Bring it back to the board for. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Aurora Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalizations for Fiscal Year 24, 25, in the amount of $800,000 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. CAO?
Chair, does the board have an appetite to do three more items before lunch, if they're quick?
Yes, I think we have, we have it.
I like to play on words.
So which one do you recommend?
I'm just projecting. 7.7?
7.7.
Ms. Turner?
We will move on to Consideration of Cannabis Ordinance Task Force Appointment. Giving the floor to Director Turner.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The item you have before you today is the appointment of an alternate on the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. This task force was established on July 12, 2022, for the purpose of drafting recommendations for the update of the current cannabis regulations. On January 14 of this year, the board requested advertisement for alternates for each member position of the task force. Additionally, at that same meeting, the board recommended that we finish our meetings in 12 weeks, which the last meet, the last potential meeting date is March 31 of this year. You'll see attached in your agenda item, the resignation of Richmond Kelly, the South County Representative. We do appreciate the time he was able to dedicate towards service on this task force. And so that does create a vacancy, a primary membership vacancy for South Lake County resident. The board does not have to take any action on that part. I just attached it for your own information. Where we are asking for action is consideration of appointment of Louis Lincoln. Sorry, I had his name switched in the staff report. His name is Louis Lincoln, for the alternate position on the cannabis industry membership. Just another point for your information, since the posting of the agenda, we did receive a few other applications for alternates or primaries. And those, since we weren't able to post them on the agenda to give the public sufficient time to review, those are not before you today, but will come before you at a future agenda. Hopefully before March 31st.
Would it be ideal to add them, postpone this one and add them together, or how do you feel about that?
Not really. Actually, because it's going to be another two weeks before I get the item on the agenda, so you won't see this again until March 11th.
Well, with that and Johanna shaking her head, I.
Yeah, whatever Johanna says is.
Vice Chair?
So you mentioned the other two apps. If we appoint this one today, then how many more openings is there still?
If you appoint this one today for the cannabis industry alternate, you will still have a primary vacancy on South Lake County resident, as well as vacancies on all the other positions.
Okay.
I have somebody that I was interested in putting as the permanent in the South County. I don't know if he's gotten his application in.
Great. We receive applications, I'll go ahead and put another item in on March 11th.
Vice President Spatia?
I need to ask it. We mentioned we want to be done March 31st, March 11th, sounds real close. Is it not possible to get this on the March 4th?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So far, I have three. We do have one that did not identify which position, so I'm guessing that might be South Lake County. One who offered to be either the alternate for North Lake County or the primary for South Lake County, which I'm not sure how that's going to work out. And then additionally, there was one other one who I would think would be cannabis industry, which is what is before you today. So if the, if the board would prefer that we just re-withdraw this item today and present it to you in total with all the applications that we'll receive before the posting of next week's agenda, which would be in the next couple of days, I'd be happy to do so.
Yeah, that would.
CAO?
I'm, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder that it will only be three of you here next week.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's only three of us next week, so I'd rather not do it next week. But I'm happy to move forward with this candidate today, since they got their application in on time.
I don't see a reason.
The only reason I would say to hold off is because you have something, somebody else wanting to be the alternate in that same spot.
We have someone who is not qualified to be primary in South Lake County, who has sent in an application. And we have someone who probably is maybe who you're talking about, Mr. Kude?
Yes.
Yeah, who didn't identify his membership, but he lives in the South County, so he would qualify for that one.
No, that's who I talked to, yes. I spoke with Mr. Kude.
So there is currently a vacancy. No one qualified has applied for that position yet.
For which position?
For South Lake County resident. It will remain vacant at this point.
So you're saying Mr. Kude is not qualified?
No, I'm saying his application was not turned in in time to post it with the agenda.
Okay, right, right.
This is for a different seat.
Yes. No, I was actually referring to the cannabis alternate. I thought you had mentioned.
Cannabis industry alternate?
Yes, and I believe you had mentioned that somebody else had filled out for that as well.
We did, but that application was received after the posting of today's agenda.
Right, but it wasn't before deadline.
It was after we were able to actually include it.
No, I understood. I just meant for the deadline to file, so.
I'm not sure what deadline you're talking about.
The one Jessica had mentioned.
Is there one that's going to compete with the one you're, we're talking about right now or?
Yes, there is. The one we're talking about right now, I thought that there was two that filled out for that cannabis industry.
One we received in a timely manner and one we did not.
Vice President Spatia?
If I may, I have concerns. There's been a lot of cancellations of the meetings. I want to make sure you have the greatest capability to have quorum. We have somebody who is resigning, can't stop them from resigning. We can't force people to go to meetings and continue to be there. Even though we're saying yes to an alternate today, that still potentially helps out quorum in the sense that if the primary doesn't show up, the alternate can and create that quorum for you. I want to be able to help you to make sure you have quorum. And so I also feel, especially if we're dealing with South County, I don't know, but I would like to see it sooner than later. I would trust the rest of our team to make the right decisions and I can pass on any information about my thoughts if I'm struggling with who it is that's being presented. But I would like to get you the greatest capable team to make sure that you are able to move forward with your meetings, because March 31st is looming and the longer we wait, the less time those people who are appointed have, or else we're going to have to extend that timeline. So I just, I think that today we move with what we have, but I'm also open for the March 4th, because I would trust the team.
With that, I will open it up to public input. Not seeing or hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board. I did receive an email. Lloyd, you might want to help me with this one. I know that there was a concern about a conflict of interest or something like that, so if you can help me identify that about the applicant, not the applicant, but the statement about conflict. I know this is a task force that's appointed according to expertise or something like that.
Yes, this position is for cannabis industry and the applicant actually does participate in the cannabis industry.
Right. And I'm just bringing this up because there was, it was brought to an email or something like that, a comment, so I just wanted to have Lloyd, if you can weigh in on that.
If you're referring to the correspondence that was sent to the office that made references to conflicts of interest, that is currently taken under review by my office for an anticipated response.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I announced that. That's really all it was. Is there any action that we would like to move forward on this?
Yes. I move that we approve Louis Lincoln as the cannabis alternate for the cannabis task force.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mariaa.
All right. Let's see, I, yes, come on up.
7.9 and 7.10.
So 7.9 is Consideration of Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Stewart Engineering Incorporated for the construction of the 14C-0099 Bartlett Creek Bridge, Bartlett Springs Road Replacement Project, Federal Project Number BRLO-5914111, in the amount of $7,922.29, and authorize the chair to execute Change Order Number One, bid number 23-02. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I'm Estrella, I'll be presenting Change Order Number One for Bartlett 99. This will address the need for extra erosion control. We did not anticipate continuing construction this far into winter, so we need a little bit extra erosion control. And we also wanted to replace fence within the project area that was missing, damaged, or laid over prior to construction. That's what this will address.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. I think this is, if it's Bartlett Springs Road that's in my district, can someone cover the motion for me?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Inc., for the construction of 14C-0099 Bartlett Creek Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Project Number BRLO-5914, parentheses, 111, in the amount of $7,922.29, and authorize the chair to execute Change Order Number One, bid number 23-02, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, 7.10, Consideration of Change Order Number Three to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Incorporated, for the construction of 14C-0048 Cache Creek Bridge, Chalk Mountain Road Replacement Project, Federal Project Number BRLO-5914094, in the amount of $51,245, and authorize the chair to execute Change Order Number Three, bid number 23-34. Estrella?
So this change order addresses the need to provide security around the area adjacent to the bridge. We're doing that by adding some fencing in the area and we're putting in some gates so special districts can have access to their levees for maintenance.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. No one on Zoom, bring it back to the board for action.
Just a brief question. These two projects should be complete soon after this and we'll see a completed project resolution or something like that soon.
We'll be bringing the notice of completion within the next couple of weeks.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
If there's nothing further, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Change Order Number Three to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Inc., for the construction of 14C-0048 Cache Creek Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Number BRLO-5914, parentheses, 094, in the amount of $51,245, and authorize the chair to execute Change Order Number Three, 23-34.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And should we take that break now? Do you guys all, do you want to do one more or is there an easy one? No? All right. Break time, we'll come back at 1:15. Know we're a little behind, but we will do 1:15.
We hear so much.
We'll come back at 1:15. Did you want to?
Oh, no, I thought you were waiting, making me wait.